Gentlemen, I'll call this meeting to order. We'll reconvene the public session and report of actions taken in closed session by the city attorney.
The city council considered those matters listed on the agenda and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you, John. All right, we'll have the Councilman Newton give the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation with Pastor Michelle Aronberg. And let me get up and get over here first.
By the name of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seriously, always want to say amen at the end of that with liberty and justice. That could be a prayer, right? Greetings. I am honored to be here with you guys tonight. Thank you for this opportunity to pray the invocation. I do not take this lightly. I have been praying for you before I arrived here for days, for weeks since I got the reminder. And so I have been praying for you. This has been quite a year, right? In these uncertain times, many people find themselves fearful, hopeless, and feeling helpless. You have been called to quite a season. The Lord placed you in these positions because of your integrity, because of your hearts, because of your love for this community. And we as a community are blessed by that. I would like to begin this invocation with a prayer from Ephesians over you. For this reason, I too, having heard of the faith in the Lord Jesus which exists among you and your love for all the saints, do not cease in giving thanks for you while making mention of you in my prayers. For the God of our Lord Jesus Christ, the Father of glory, may give you a spirit of wisdom and revelation in the knowledge of him. I pray that the eyes of your heart may be enlightened so that you may know what is the hope of his calling, what are the riches of the glory of his inheritance in the saints, and what is the boundless greatness of his power toward us who believe. Dear God, we invoke your presence tonight at this meeting. We need you. This world is full of difficult things, but nothing is too big or too difficult for you. We pray for wisdom and discernment, for peace and for your favor in all things. Oh, Lord, may every word spoken here tonight build and encourage unity and peace. Lord, grant your wisdom to all who are here. You have ordained these leaders for such a time as this. Lord, we thank you for Mayor Hanna, for Mayor Protem Bash, for council members, Grunmeyer, Hoffman, and Newton. Lord, bless them. Bless them richly for all they give and all they do. Protect them, guard them, as well as their families. Lord, we ask your rich blessings on the city of Norco and all who live, work, worship, play, and do business here. Keep it safe, keep it healthy. Thank you, dear God. Lord, bless our country. We humbly ask you to heal our land, bring peace, health, and a sense of harmony and belonging. God bless the USA and God bless Horstown, USA. And now may the God of all hope fill you with all joy and peace in believing so that you will abound in hope by the power of Holy Spirit. We pray these things in the name above all names. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Michelle. Come again sometime. Okay, tonight we have a presentation by the Riverside County Flood Control. Then I'll ask you gentlemen a favor. If you'll hang around after you finish, because we have some people in the audience that are gonna make some statements at public comments, which we can't reply to and you can't reply to. But after they get through, then you guys can go out in the hall and talk about what their deal is. Is that fair?
Absolutely.
All right, welcome, sir.
Thank you. So, good evening, council members, and thank you for having us here tonight to talk about our project. My name is Claudio Padres. I'm the chief of design and construction at Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. I've also have with me David Garcia. He's our engineering project manager over our construction management section. And so the Flood Control District, just a little bit about who we are. We provide, of course, flood control and facilities. And we both design, we construct, we operate and maintain these facilities across the western third of Riverside County, including, of course, in the city of Norco. Just wanted to start with a little bit, you know, our commitment to the city of Norco. We get our funding, almost all of our funding for our projects from tax revenue. And so we are very focused and attentive to reinvesting that tax revenue back into the communities. And so to that end, within our five-year capital improvement plan, we've got over 18 projects and $40 million programmed specifically to the city of Norco. And I'm going to talk about one of those projects that's ongoing tonight. Before I do, we recently completed one that's along Crestview Drive. We call it our Norco Line NA1 Storm Drain Project. We've got ongoing right now the South Norco Channel Stage Six Project. That's the one I'm going to talk to tonight. And we're just about to start on our Norco Crestview Drive Debris Basin Project. That'll be starting this month. And that's one also along Crestview Drive that's going to complete that NA1 system and help us trap debris and mud before it gets out into Crestview Drive and the community. So now, having said that, I'll focus in on our current active construction project. We call it our South Norco Channel Stage Six Project. It's actually got a longer, more complicated name, but I'll spare you. Just a little bit of background on that project. The red line shown on the map there roughly between Second and Third Street along Temescal Avenue is an existing ditch that was built back in the 1970s. So that ditch built in the 70s was built by us. We've been maintaining it, but it was never designed to any ultimate flood control standards. It was basically intended to help guide stormwater as best we could at the time until we had the funding and the ability to build a more permanent facility, which is what we're doing now. So the project that's been ongoing is replacing that red line there, that ditch, with an ultimate system along the same alignment, but actually extending farther to the north, ultimately up to Hillside Avenue and Hillside Lane, and also east along Third Street. So portions of that, I'll call it the main line portion of that, is still an open channel, but a much larger one. And then other portions of it have actually been upgraded to an underground storm drain, including both at the Norco High School and the middle school to the north. Those have been put underground, both for safety and for other purposes. And then, of course, the portions in Third Street, that's, of course, within a road, that's underground. And then along Hillside Lane and Hillside Avenue, that's all undergrounded now. And just as an example of the kinds of improvements, you know, if you were to look at an example of that ditch that was there before, that has been significantly expanded and upgraded for additional capacity to provide what we call 100-year flood protection. So statistically, the largest storm that is likely to happen in a 100-year period, that system can now handle. That upgraded channel now has concrete side slopes. It used just to be all dirt, and it would erode significantly in storm events. It also has a cobble-lined bottom over much of it. That just allows it to stop eroding, but still let water percolate where it can. And this is an example photo of a before and after. This is in front of a high school along Temescal Avenue. The right photo is what it looked like before, and the left being now that that portion has been constructed. And so in that photo, you can see, of course, both at the, on the right side, the, in the foreground, you can see the existing ditch that was built in contrast with the concrete slopes that are there now, as well as the crossing underneath the road. And so that crossing has been significantly upgraded, which is going to provide a lot of flood protection to the community and the road itself to allow, and to allow the waters to stay in the channel rather than having those old culverts and those old pipes plug, and then the water would go elsewhere and over the road and into the high school. So that's just an example of it. We've been under construction since September 2019. We actually awarded it back in July 2019 to Alabasi. That's our contractor. It's a $7.7 million project that we're actively building right now. We are at the tail end of it, thankfully. We're just about to be completed. Contractually, they have until March to complete the work. I understand them to be wrapping up the majority of the elements of work already right now. And so we're going to be spending the next bit of time doing what we call punch list items, basically tying off loose ends, cleaning up things, or if something was damaged, making sure we go, you know, get it fixed properly before we're completely wrapped up and done with the project. So that's a little bit of a timeline. Of course, you know, the reason we're doing this is for flood protection, not only for the residents, but the schools, the roads in the area. But one of the things that's going to happen when we're done, once we finish construction, we're going to be applying to FEMA to get a revision to what they call their flood insurance rate maps. What that means for your community, once FEMA has approved that, is basically FEMA will have recognized the benefit that this channel is providing. And residents that might otherwise need to purchase flood insurance, typically it's by their mortgage lender, the mortgage lender would require it. Those residents that may be required to purchase that could see significant reductions either through the reduction in the premiums or the elimination even of the premiums entirely. So often that can save people thousands of dollars a year. And so we're looking forward to those benefits, of course. Of course, significant projects like this do come with challenges, and I want to talk a little bit about that. So well before we ever get into construction, the Flood Control District is doing a lot of investigations and design to specifically manage the many challenges we have. I want to say the first and biggest challenge we face in building projects like this is we're not building, say, a new building on what I'll call virgin land, empty land where there's nothing there yet. We're building these storm drains through what I call the built environment, right? There's already streets, there's homes, there's residences, there's utilities, there's a lot that's already there. And so we spend a significant amount of money and time in advance, well in advance of construction, investigating everything we can about what that environment looks like. You know, of course, just typical, you know, what buildings are there, what the road looks like, exactly what the shape of the road is, all of that, of course, but including also the utilities under the road that we can't see, right? We will go do potholing and do a lot of investigations, trying our best to figure out exactly where all those things are, to the extent we can, of course, well in advance of construction. Once we get into construction, of course, there's the potential for noise and dust. Obviously, we're bringing in a lot of heavy equipment. We're bringing in a lot of materials to build these systems. And we have systems in place with our contractor and contractual requirements about what hours they can work in and what steps they have to take to make sure that dust isn't becoming a problem or to the extent does get on the road, that it's cleaned up promptly. There's a lot of contractual requirements we put in place to make sure those are dealt with. I already mentioned about the utilities and the investigations we do there, but also traffic impacts. We actually spent a significant amount of time with your staff in advance of construction, developing traffic control plans to identify ways to continue to allow traffic to progress through and around our project safely, while, of course, allowing the project to be completed as expediently as possible. So there's a lot of work that goes in advance of construction to help manage these issues. But of course, anytime you go into construction, there's always things you can't anticipate and things that might not go according to that plan. And so some other things that we have in place is, of course, very strict contractual requirements with our contractor. But I also have a team of employees, an entire team of construction management employees in-house that work directly for us, including David Garcia, and he has inspectors. We have a full-time inspector dedicated to just this one project. They're not bouncing off to other ones. They're on this one project full-time that is out there doing nothing more than helping to make sure that the project goes as well as possible for your community. Not only that it's built right, but then when issues come up, if they do come up, that we are on them right away and addressing them right away and working with our contractor to address that. So the next slide really doesn't have too much to it, but it was just an example of the project. So the blue line is essentially the alignment of the project. And I just went through and did a quick count to show that immediately adjacent to the project, there's over 100 properties that we've been coordinating with throughout this project. And so that's a lot, and I know that there's a lot of people within your community that have been seeing this project on a day-in and day-out basis. And they have really been our eyes and ears, and we really do appreciate their feedback as we go through. When they point out something to us, you know, we've now got 100 more sets of eyes than our own to identify issues and tackle them. So we really do appreciate when your residents do bring things up so that we can get them addressed right away. That's pretty much the end of my presentation. I've got myself, of course, and I've got David Garcia here, if there were any questions. And also I hear your message, we will stay behind afterwards to speak with any residents if they do have any comments they would like to discuss with us.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to say how much we appreciate the relationship that Flood Control and the city have. Overall, you've been great partners, and that, I think you've benefited the residents and also working with Public Works and Chad. So that does not go unnoticed. But specifically, on the Third Street Project, and in, that I know with myself, and I'm not speaking for other council members, I'm just making the assumption that our residents have reached out to us with various complaints about your contractor. And I'd like to say, to thank your organization and Chad for attempting to deflect on the behalf of council. But I still have a contention that when a resident reaches out to us, it's our obligation to answer them and try to find a remedy. So it, and it's just, just knowing the industry and the challenges that you have to go through, it's, so I decided I'm going to go look and find out myself and visit with some of the residents on site. And I'm sure after this meeting, you're going to hear a larger elaboration about that. And I think what upset me first is when I went down Hillside Avenue, and there were two open excavations with just like some S conage and no traffic control. Got to Hillside and Third, where there was some work going on, and the traffic was just too blocked, no traffic control, zero. And the sequencing of the work that was going on was just very haphazard. And it's kind of that, and I'm, I think when you have a weak contractor, you have to even have a much stronger inspector behind that. And I understand those challenges, but it was a cluster out there the day I went. So I called Chad, and that, I think, is what kind of set me off a little bit, is why would our director of Public Works have to drive out to the site to tell your contractor he has to provide traffic control? I mean, that's a line item on his bid that
Absolutely.
he's charging the taxpayers for that he's not providing. And the other thing I'd like to just say, and maybe we look at in the future, that with Flood Control projects, I'm not picking on this one, but I'm going to use it as an example, that like down Third Street, the majority of your work was center of street for installation of storm drain, okay? So what that does is leaves just a minimal amount of existing pavement on both sides of the street. Why don't we just rehab the entire street instead of, you know, two-thirds of the center and just leaving the edges alone? If there's a way that we can work with Public Works to look at, you've taken 75% of the existing street out, let's just rehab it completely. And wherever you can, start to eliminate like the asphalt curbing and go with concrete. It just, in some instances, it just made no sense to me, and it just kind of looked silly. There was a couple of storm drain structures that, on Hillside Avenue, where the open excavations were, that all the curbing around the storm drain structure is concrete, and then you add a two-foot section of asphalt curb. It just like, it doesn't last. And it's just like, why can't we look that further step and have something a little more permanent? And so it was just kind of that uncomfortable feeling and some of the sequencing with that, that, and I'm sure you can work out those challenges, but a lot of it was that, you know, the residents that had to live there daily and put up with it. And I'm just trying to give you some of the feedback that I got on it.
Yeah, no, I definitely appreciate that feedback. And I guess I kind of heard two themes from what you were saying. You know, one was about the traffic control and then also
There wasn't any.
Understood, yeah. And then the, about the improvements that, you know, could be considered and maybe should be considered
Right.
in a broader scheme, right?
Yes.
So if a good portion of the road's being dug up, can we find some way to do the rest, right? And that is something that, on that second issue in particular, I'll tackle that first, that is something that we are doing a lot more explicitly now on all of our projects. And that's not, you know, just me responding to your comment. That's actually something that we're working on with all cities that we work in, is very early on in the design, this one's actually been in design for over five years, but very early on in the design, discussing and coordinating with city staff, you know, for example, with Chad, to identify, are there other improvements we want to lump together in this and get more done with the same contract at the same time? As Flood Control, there's only so much we can do with our funding. Our funding is very strict and limited to Flood Control purposes, so I can't just do street improvements with Flood Control dollars. But I can partner with the city and then look for opportunities to leverage both our funding sources and your funding sources to do greater good for the community. And that's something that we are taking very seriously and doing much more explicitly. And frankly, I'm mandated of all my staff that they have that specific discussion with city staff on every single project moving forward.
Good.
And so hopefully that in the future and as we move forward with, you know, these additional projects I was referencing, you know, hopefully those, you know, will be better addressed upfront so we can look for those opportunities to partner with you guys in that way. Of course, on the traffic control issue, you know, I hate to hear that that happened. And you're absolutely right, we do have a contractual requirement, we have that item. We are paying them to do that traffic control. And traffic control, as you likely know, is very dynamic. So depending on what's happening, everything needs to be shifted, and you need to think about all of that stuff. So I don't know the circumstance on the day that you were there. I wish I did, I might be able to comment more informed on exactly what you saw. It might be that they just, yeah, that they weren't doing what they should have been doing. That might very well be the case.
Chad came out to deal with it so Chad could fill you in, and he's smiling behind his mask. So believe me, I've been very gentle about it. I wasn't to him.
And you're right, you know, depending on the complexity of the project, sometimes we do actually have more than one inspector on the job. And especially on a big project like this, there's a lot for them to keep an eye on. And so that's where we do look to the community, the city as well. You know, Chad has brought a number of things to our attention as well, to help us address them, right? Because there's going to be things that we can't see, we can't have eyes on everything at all times. I regret that that happened, and certainly I'll be looking into and reinforcing, the need to keep an eye on traffic controls like that with my staff.
Good. And once again, I do want to let you know, I certainly appreciate the relationship that we have with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate what Greg said. I'm doing a Jerry Nadler moment. Yeah, I really appreciate the time I've been here going clear back to Park and Rec, the partnership we have with you. You've saved us millions of dollars, and you've come through with some incredible projects. I'm really excited about the beginning of the Crestview Debris Project. Do you have a timeline on when that's going to be started and maybe completed?
I know it's going to be, construction is going to actually start this month. Completion date, I might ask for some help from my partner here, David?
Yeah, so hopefully we'll get that done in a half month.
That's a huge project. That's fantastic. Yeah, I'm really, really happy about that. Is there some, do we have a plan yet of that? Have we, Chad, do we have something yet?
The plan of that was sent in as part of the flyer that we gave to council announcing the start of that project.
Previously?
We have the original plan that was developed, we don't, and we
That was a while ago, right?
Correct. As far as the original project, it just wasn't funded at the time because they needed the property acquisition first.
Yeah, so have you bought the property and everything? Is it all done?
Yeah, that was, we actually advertised this, I think, all the way back in April, but we
Yeah. Did you have to condemn the part of the Crest Lawn Cemetery property or?
So it was what I would generally call a friendly acquisition, but unfortunately, we did need to go to the courts to remove a deed restriction that was recorded on the property that limits it to cemetery use.
People were dying to get in there.
Yeah, a court has to order that off. It's not something that the seller can do on their own. And so we did end up having to go to court, and with COVID, that took a long time to get done.
Yeah, well, I think, Burwin, we started on that, Greg? 2000, when was the big flood? 12, 2013, 14? 2010? So I'm really happy you're doing that. But again, I can't emphasize more, the partnership is wonderful. And will you have a flagman on Crestview?
I'd have to check the plans, but I do believe Crestview is going to be completely open. I don't think we're doing any closures along Crestview.
You're going up behind the houses.
Yeah, because all of our construction is going to be up on the land. It's not, we're not doing a lot of construction in the road itself. But of course, deliveries and such like that, yeah, they might need a flagman when they're bringing material in or out. And we'll keep an eye on that for sure.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to reiterate that Riverside County Flood Control and Norco have a good relationship. I think in this situation, and I heard it too from the residents, they have been slammed first with the Wiley project as far as the drilling of the wells along Hillside and Third. So that's been going on for a long time. Of course, this Flood Control Project has been a while in the making. And it wasn't the easiest project probably to go through because you've got people living there. So I can understand the frustration. And I think what would really bother me was the two I heard, the comments from the contractor. And again, this is, I think we talked yesterday, is about the telling your contractor, that's what he's there for. And I'm sorry, he's frustrated that day, but you just don't tell the people, that's what you got. You know, that's what you're going to get. They're not going to get me anymore. No, there are people, I'm sure you have your onsite people, that's who you direct them to.
Right.
If there's comments to, that contractor should have never have taken it upon himself. He may have been a sub, I don't know, but you don't talk to the residents that way. I mean, they're just, they want to know. I would want to know, you would want to know. Somebody's going to dig up in front of your street in front of your house, hey, you're going to leave it like that? Well, no, that's, and I think that was the attitude is, is more or less. And I, you're probably going to hear it from them too. It is, and what are we going to get? And I agree that we probably should have worked a little harder on trying to coordinate to get that road done all at the same time. to get that road done all at the same time. We're going to have to get it done. I mean, that's, it's to make it correct. Will it be a year or two? I don't know. It's going to be up to Chad and see what he puts on his program. But it, I don't want to chew up something in just time, but, and I will agree with Councilman Newton, when I went through there, actually the day I was doing it, they were finishing up the top coat of their project, hadn't, they had not sealed the manhole covers yet.
Okay.
And that time, there was no, but he's, guy driving the tractor, he stops, he goes, okay, come on, come on. You've got a guy working a machinery, he shouldn't be the one to tell you to go around the roadway. That's not right. So that's, it did happen, so I'll give you that date, that's what it was. So thank you, Berwin, thank you.
And I will definitely follow up on that traffic control issue. That's important. We're, the mentality I try to foster with all my staff and to the extent I'm able to convince the contractors to have a similar perspective, is we're here to serve the community. If the community's not happy with us when we leave, then we failed. That's kind of my mentality. And so I want to make sure that by the time we're done and certainly even throughout, that we're doing everything we can to keep the community happy. You know, I've personally met multiple times in the field with some of the residents on this project and will continue to do so as much as is necessary to make sure these things are addressed. About the contractor's comments, if they were, you know, inappropriate or harsh in any way, you know, I, yeah, again, I do apologize for that. I completely agree that those kinds of issues, you know, the contractor should just be deferring them to our inspector who can more appropriately identify what needs to be done. Because the contractor has maybe his own self-interest in mind about what he wants to do and not wants to do versus when it comes to us, if something needs to be done, we will make it happen regardless whether they want it to or not. And so I completely agree. And there's some good feedback that I will bring back to the team.
And I too want to thank you for the relationship you've had with the city here. And through the years, I've seen lots and lots of these flood control projects get completed and it's a plus. There's still some more that are areas that are much needed, but I know they're on the CIP, but driving around the town during the hard rains and everything before you put them in, you can really tell the difference now when it rains and everything. We appreciate, appreciate all your work. And now, does your other, has your partner got some more he's going to add to this or?
No, I think that was the end. I brought him here in case there were any specific discussions on specifics that I might not be familiar with because he's more day-to-day on the construction projects than I am. So I have him here for that purpose and then also for when we do speak to any residents that want to speak with us, he'll be able to both provide information and context, but also provide direction back to staff if something needs to be done as a result of those discussions.
Okay, well, we appreciate you coming and appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
Sure do. And thanks again.
Thank you so much and appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about it.
And remember-
Yes, tomorrow.
Remember hang around because there's some residents that want to talk to you after they make their comments up here.
Will do.
All right. Okay, moving right along, we're going to change the agenda up a little bit and we're going to move right on into public comments right now so these residents can talk and then they can meet with these gentlemen out here. And I'll read this statement. This is, this is the time when persons in the audience wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk so that you may be recognized. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at time such comments are made. The city council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. And we have a three-minute limit on the comments, so Madam Clerk, do we have any, I know we've got some cards.
Yes, the first speaker is Jason Borzma.
Good evening, council, members and Mayor Hanna.
How you doing, Jason?
Hopefully you have a great retirement coming up. Except for good luck getting out of the city.
Right.
First of all, I want to say I'm very glad for the project, the Third Street. That's my comment is on the third, the flood control that we just had the presentation on. I'm very glad it got done. It's, I'm waiting for the big rain to see if they have the Third Street River. Should be gone, so some of my, one of my complaints are that there was zero notification for any of the residents that I know of. I live on Buckboard Lane, I have to exit out Third to go either way. So there was no notification from the city, from the contractor of when project start date was, when projected, projected end datas, or any of that kind of stuff. Third is, my third comment would be is that the 30-inch water main that goes down Third, down Third Street, now from my recollection, I could not remember seeing that trench. Now you can see that trench. So that did not get repaved, that section. That trench is wide open, they had excavators, they had a lot of equipment on there. Understandably, some of the stuff is going to move. So, and my fourth comment is the new asphalt curbing that they have put down, let's see, it goes from Temeska to Pano, it is on the eastbound lane. The width of that between the two curves now is 22 one-inch coming up at the crossing of the bridge when you come through it, of the storm drain. It goes to 24 feet, four inches before it goes to the 30 feet where the concrete dust began. My opinion is that roads should get up to the 30 feet for safety of travel, but at the 22-foot, one-inch is awful narrow now that there's asphalt curbing. There used to not be asphalt curbing there. So you had an out if somebody was taking way too much of the lane. Now you have no out. All you're going to do is hit that asphalt curbing. I came around the corner after Thanksgiving in my motorhome to meet up to a semi. Let me tell you, that was tough. Our mirrors just about hit each other. So that is the end of my comments, although I do want to say I am very thankful for the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Next speaker card is Charlie Chastain.
City Council, Mayor, I've resided here in the city of Norco since 1966, so seeing that sign up there kind of makes me a little, little happy to know that I'm a true Norconian. So I kind of like that.
You are.
What brought me here tonight is that we have a motorhome that's been parked over on our street and it's there quite a bit. The sheriff department is well aware of this and they've came out and cited. I did bring some photos, I don't know if I could share with you guys so you could look at them.
And to the clerk and they'll pass them.
And it'll show you where that the sheriff department has come out and marked their tires. They've cited them. The sheriff department is well aware of these people being there and I think they're doing a great job with trying to get them off of our street. But it's come to the point where we all just kind of, there's more people in the audience that are going to speak about this, but the other day, you know, I found what seems to be like a crack pipe in my front yard and it's just, this kind of stuff is just getting old. I'd like to read the letter from one of my neighbors who couldn't be here tonight. And it says, "I'm writing this letter in support of my neighbor Charles Chastain in order to confirm and verify the ongoing activities and issues our street has experienced with motorhome and occupants on our street. The motorhome in question is parked on Sixth Street," and this is Sixth Street between River Ridge and Cedar. So just to let you know, that little section of Sixth Street. "Often directly in front of my home, 2109 Sixth Street, my neighbor and I have on several occasions contacted the Norco Sheriff's Department, the City of Norco Code Enforcement and the Department of Children and Family Services in an attempt to address civil issues which have arise from the parking of this motorhome long-term on our residential street. The first issue we have to deal with is the long-term parking of this motorhome on a residential street, which I am sure is in violation of some city ordinance, municipal code, or published state of California vehicle code. The occupants have used our street as long-term parking for more than a year, which is very frustrating since the motorhome is an eyesore and a health hazard. The owners also create a road hazard when they park the motorhome more than 18 inches from the curb from time to time. In addition, they dump hazardous and human waste onto the street, which we've all seen, which is very unsanitary and affects our public health. I have observed both the sheriff's department code enforcement advising to move the motorhome and after advisement, the occupants simply moved the vehicle a few feet, either forwards or backwards, then continued with the normal course of business, which creates a general health hazard for me and all of our neighbors in this age of COVID-19. I would really like the city of Norco to step up and police these hazards and motor vehicles. As you can see in the pictures, it'll show you where they just move it up and they paint where their tires were. Secondly, the occupants of this motorhome have small children whom live inside the vehicle and on one occasion I have seen and confronted the small male child on my private property as he attempted to make contact with my dog. Again, I believe the city of Norco should really step up here and cause the Department of Children and Family Services to open a case of child neglect so that we can ensure these children are being properly taken care of. Lastly, the occupants of the motorhome have several animals which live inside the vehicle and I, on several occasions, have seen these animals roaming our neighborhood freely, which is a danger to adults, children, and other pets which may be walking with their owners. I also feel strongly that these animals are not being cared for very well and believe the animal control should become involved to ensure the proper care of these animals are being addressed. I thank you for hearing my concerns and look forward to having these issues addressed promptly." And this is from my neighbor Sergio Venegas. But I want to thank you guys for listening to me. It's the first time I've ever been in front of the city council and, you know, all I can tell you is that I love this city.
Thank you. Thanks.
The next speaker is Carlos Moreno.
Good evening, council. So I'm here in regards to the same issue. I live next door to where the motorhome is being parked. Several occasions, the kids are sleeping in the back, which I believe is a garage. Appears that there's no restroom, so it's either they're urinating in the backyard and so forth. There's now two males and a female living in the motorhome. They come out 10 o'clock in the morning while the kids come out of the back. And I've seen this and I've witnessed this because I'm cutting my grass in the morning and I see and it's not right. There's been an occasion too where I found a pipe on my side of the yard. It was frustrating and upsetting. I went to go talk to the gentleman, like, this is not right. And I have kids in my home and of course, he, you know, said that it wasn't his and so forth. He was sure that he cracked it and I disposed of it, but it's just been an ongoing nightmare with them. Again, it's been, I think, close to a year. I believe there are felons or that sort. Police officers have been called numerous times. Again, nothing's been done, so I'm here and hopefully asking you guys for something, you know, enough is enough and something to be done. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lori Chastain.
Welcome. I am sad you're retiring. I have also lived in this town since 1975. Am I allowed to take this down while I speak?
Right.
I'm also here about the same incident, like my husband spoke about the motorhome. What I'm going to add is that you don't know is they are homeless. That is not where they reside. The grandmother of the woman lives there and she is senile and they are taking advantage of her. This started over a year ago in October and the grandmother actually knocked on my door asking me to call the sheriff because they were abusing her. So, long story short, we did that and ever since we've been harassed. You towed the, the city towed the very first motorhome they lived in. This second one, they've had about seven or eight months. So they're living out in the motorhome. I watched them the night before Thanksgiving with a hose at 2:00 in the morning flushing something down the curb. So we knew they're draining urine again. They're in the motorhome all hours of the night. You can tell that they are not doing things they should be doing and the children are sleeping in the garage in the back. Sheriffs have actually been on our street 35 times. I have, we have cameras on our home, so I can document it. Sorry, I'm nervous. We have called code enforcement, we've spoke to Javier Rodriguez, he actually, and to Kathy, which Javier told my husband two weeks ago, there's nothing they can do. We needed to go higher. The sheriff also said we needed to go higher. That's why we're standing here. What we would like is, what they told us they could do, was post on our street, no overnight parking of an RV. So that prevented them from parking on our street. They have been there so long, it's been over a year, they have wore a path through the ladies' ice plant. I personally have cleaned up their trash five times every time they drive away. The neighbors will see me out there with a bucket and a shovel, I just did it Saturday. Filled her green trash cans. They leave trash, cigarettes, broken beer bottles. They have no respect. They are not Norco people, by the way. They just moved in on her once the grandfather died. She has done everything she can, but she's extremely senile and we are done with it. There are two males, there was first a male and a female and two children, now the second male has showed up. Probation officer was there last week, both males are on probation. I know I only have 30 seconds. On Thanksgiving Eve, about midnight, I was going to go to bed and seen movement, so I looked out. I watched the younger male go underneath the motorhome, change his clothes, and proceed to do this. Well, there's only one motion, he's loading a gun. And I thought, oh my. So I proceeded to watch. I watched them go up and down the driveway, pull pots and pans out of the car. I don't know what they're doing, but they're not doing what they should be doing. There's two small children, not registered in school, they're living in the garage. There's like a shed garage, we gave you a picture of it, that's up high. They don't have running water. They knocked on the other neighbor's door and asked if they could shower, the children did. She called CPS. CPS has been there, elderly abuse has been there, probation officers have been there and the sheriffs over 30 times. They need to be moved. I don't want the motorhome towed because then they're going to have nowhere to live but in that garage. We would like our street posted, no overnight parking for an RV. We're all in agreeance, there's only eight houses on our street. Thank you. We've been there 22 years and I don't think you've ever been on our street, but now we have an issue. Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker card, Jim Pollard.
Evening, Mayor, city council staff. On a different note, I'm here to talk about the equestrian crossing that I talked about on Vine Street between Cordon and Bluff. This horse crossing is in the middle of the block. Chad sent out a email to council members talking about this and he alludes to the fact that it's in, not in the middle of the block. And there's a sign that's faded and they're behind trees, that's one issue that he addressed. And there's two trails, a backyard trail that goes down to the river and a bridle trail that's in front of the houses that cross it both at the same point in the middle of Vine. The signs need to be addressed and I believe that we need to have a crossing marking in the street there. The street is new, but there's no crossing marks for the horses. We do it for schoolchildren, pedestrians and seniors, but there's nothing here for the horses in the middle of this block. This block has trees on it and it's, can be deceiving that cars can't seal equestrian coming at that point. California vehicle code 21805 states vehicles must yield to equestrians in a designated equestrian crossing. You can take that either way. What does it make us, equestrian crossing? I think at this point in the middle of the street, we need to have a crossing marking in the street. That's not just my opinion, but the residents, what brought this and other writers brought this to my attention. That's why I brought it to you here several months ago. Vine Street between Vine and Bluff is maybe a half mile long. There's been two fatal accidents in that section between Cordon and Bluff. One was attributed to speeding and after that accident years ago, the city installed a street light in that location where- a streetlight in that location where curves and approaches Bluff Street. Uh, another young man was killed, and it was attributed to distracted driving. This is only a few houses away from where this, um, trail crossing that I'm talking about occurred. This is a safety issue, and I think it should be, uh, looked at and addressed properly before, I think we can have measure our money approved for this. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Jim.
Next speaker is Derek Emery.
Good evening. Is this on? Good evening, council. Uh, yeah, I'm Derek Emery. This is my first time speaking at any city council meeting as well. Um, and I wanted to follow up on, uh, the Third Street Project, the flood control project, uh, that we had heard comments about tonight, and I appreciate your comments, Greg. Um, thank you. And, yeah, I'm, I'm one of those residents that I did email, uh, the mayor here, uh, about several issues that I had. Um, and I know I only have three minutes, so I'm gonna try to get through that real quick, but basically, I want to reiterate the traffic issue. Um, at first, you know, I heard comments of, from the neighbors that it was an issue, and, you know, then as time went on, I, I also agreed with them, uh, with, they, they had every entrance to my property said road closed, and there was no way to go home, you know, and so I had to go around on the wrong side of the road to get home, and there was absolutely no, no coverage, um, for people with the signs and whatnot. And I have an extensive traffic background, uh, through work, and so, you know, that's kind of frustrating. But, um, also, one of my main things I want to just get to real quick is, is that the, uh, the curbing. Um, there's a section in front of my house that was gonna be, uh, was slated to be changed from a concrete rolled curb to a, uh, asphalt curb, and it made no sense whatsoever because it was all, it was a rolled curb prior to this project. And then they just stopped it right up to the storm drain with, it was about twenty feet left along Third Si, uh, Third Street, uh, on that side of my property. Um, it was just left where they were gonna do asphalt curbing, and, and not until I brought it up to Claudio and, and the rest of you, which Claudio's been great. He addressed my issue. I think he's gonna take care of it. That's my understanding, and so that's going to be done. That's my main concern, you know, um, but that's gonna get done because it just doesn't make sense to, to not replace something that was already there with something of lesser quality that's not gonna last. And so, um, that, and then, uh, also, my, my sprinkler lines were broken by Alabasi, um, you know, and my water was running down the street for weeks, apparently, like three weeks, four weeks maybe, and my water bill went up. I was wondering why it spiked. Uh, nobody ever told me. Some kid with a skateboard came up and said, hey, we think you have a broken pipe. Turned out my, my, my water, uh, lines were broken. And so that has yet to be, uh, addressed as far as fixed. Um, and then, but again, Claudio said he was gonna do that, or, or at least the Alabasi claims that are gonna do that. Um, and then, and the water bill, I, I yet to hear back in as far as any credit. But, uh, also, uh, yeah, the guy came on my property and used my hose actually from Alabasi. I got him on camera a couple of different days, which I thought was interesting as well. So, this is some of the issues I wanted to bring up with Alabasi as, in, in general. Um, but I just wanted to stress the, the rolled curb. Hopefully, it does get replaced. You know, that's, that's my main concern, and I'll talk to Claudio again just to get that reassurance because I have yet to see that. Um, but, again, I, I just wanted to agree with Jason in that area. That's, that's very narrow. So, thank you for your, for tonight and listening to my comments. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no further speaker cards, mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, folks, for coming up to speak, and the ones that had issue with, uh, flood control can talk to these two gentlemen out there in the, in the hall there. They'll be happy to talk to you. Okay, now we'll go back to the regular agenda. Uh, item number one is the city council communications reports on regional boards and commissions. Uh, we'll start with Mayor Pro Tim Bash.
Uh, well, WR cog, I attended an economic development, uh, planning session with, uh, Mayor Bailey from Riverside. I think it's his last meeting. Um, essentially, what they're looking to do is to create, um, sort of a tri-prong, um, focus on education, to retool people, uh, create sort of a, um, a place incubator where people can come together, uh, to develop and come up with new ideas, and then to find ways to, to attract economic development to the area. There's a lot of things that need to be worked out. I, I wasn't a hundred percent behind it, but after having that session, I'm a little bit excited about it. I think it might turn out to be pretty good. The, the one concerning thing is the competition between the larger cities and the smaller cities. Um, in my view, I think they need to actually learn from Norco, the way we've diversified income and things like that, but that's just me. And then, uh, I attended the California League of Cities Committee Chair Planning Session. Um, the big issues are homelessness, um, economic development, infrastructure, emergency planning. Um, I was really proud of the fact that, that Andy and the staff and the Cal Fire put together a great emergency planning, uh, system, Brian Petrie. A lot of the things we've already done. Uh, my input was, uh, along with some of those things, was to find ways to create community. I think that, uh, and it did, it did meet with some good response. Um, the idea that we create events, organizations, things that create community, because just in my, my personal view, a lot of things are, are happening to destroy communities, the breaking them up, the districting, the COVID, um, are kind of erasing our history. Uh, those are things that concern me, and I just know that Norco, one of the things that binds us together is our fair. I talked about that. The mounted posse events, uh, the open space, all of it. We have a park and rec that truly is one of the best in the state. Um, and I really believe that, so I really tried to hammer home those. But the big things that people need to address is homelessness and things like that. And then, um, on December seventh, we're doing a, we shot, uh, in tandem with Norco College, uh, we shot the, uh, Supervisor Spiegel, uh, the L N C F folks. I did an entry, entrance or a, sort of an opening, uh, but I think we're putting together a very good Pearl Harbor, uh, fourteenth annual Pearl Harbor Day, uh, virtual event. Now, we have a lot of footage of people that were actually Pearl Harbor survivors that came to the hospital. Um, we've got the, both commanding officers, Seal Beach and, um, NavC Corona, uh, have given us footage, uh, talking about Pearl Harbor. Uh, we have some wonderful music, uh, guys playing harmonicas and just really cool stuff. Um, and I'm looking forward to seeing that. I saw the, I wrote the script, and I saw the first parts of, of what's going on, and it's nice because the editing department over at Norco College is doing all the editing. Um, so I'm very excited to see what that's gonna turn out, and that'll, that'll debut on the seventh, and my understanding is it will show not just locally, but it will show throughout the entire Navy. Uh, when I wrote the script, I sent it over to them. They approved everything, so Friday, I'll get the final product, send it to the Navy, and they're telling me they'll send it worldwide. Uh, I don't know if people know this, but Norco actually has the largest West Coast Pearl Harbor ceremony, literally on the West Coast, and I'm real proud of that. Uh, last year, it was sad, first time we didn't have a Pearl Harbor survivor. They were all gone. So, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin. Robin?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Hoffman?
A little busy. Um, I got to, I attended the One Water, One Watershed Meeting. Uh, it was the, the final meeting for Mayor Bailey from Riverside, and I will be taking his position officially in January, but I sat and listened to it, and I can see just from the beginning, um, unfortunately, how you look at it, uh, I think some of the interest in that stopped at the Van Buren Bridge and kind of left us, those of us that were down river, a little bit on the short-sighted, uh, position, uh, just gathering from the information on that, from that meeting. The one thing I noticed, and, and this is something that's gonna come up, we're probably gonna have our count again. Is that not correct, Andy, in January, the homeless count? And, and that's something that, the homeless do affect the watershed area, and there's always been a big concentration of upstream. San Bernardino County Sheriff was, uh, part of this report. I saw nothing on the Riverside County Sheriff's Department input onto this thing, which really is a shame. So, hopefully, I'm gonna push a little bit more on that, and, uh, because we are down river, and, uh, everything that's upriver affects us down here, the quality of water and what goes on, so push for that. And then I attended the vector control board meeting. Uh, they're gonna actually go dark during the holiday season. That was their big thing. Uh, Berwyn, it was only less than fifteen minutes, and I think most of it was because they were bouncing between other people. Uh, and the, uh, attended the Riverside County Programs of Projects Committee with Berwyn. Uh, and then, uh, November twenty-fourth, uh, we served a hundred and seven meals from our, my Rotary Club, and I appreciate what guys did. That was a part of a grant money that we got from the county Riverside, so we're using it. And then, uh, we met with Public Works Staff, uh, on Monday regarding a program. And the one thing, um, oh yeah, today, Cal Lafco, Cal Lafco, interesting, this is all the Southern California La, uh, Lafcos. We had a meeting, and, um, interesting thing is part of that, as far as our county. Uh, by the way, our county, our county's not doing so good financially, but we're doing a lot better than some of the counties and some of the cities in the outline areas. San Diego's doing okay. Orange County, LA County, they're hurting. Uh, and one of the things in Andy, they're probably gonna hit us up on this, is that, uh, for the next six months, unless they've contacted you already, the Lafco's gonna be doing a review of all twenty-eight cities by June of, uh, they want to get it done by June of this year. So Gary's gonna take, there's an, an update on everything that's going on as far as cost and what our projects are, so. And then, uh, the one thing, uh, Berwyn, I appreciate you introducing me today at the RTA meeting. I was impressed. Um, no, I'm not being facetious. It was a pretty good meeting. Tomorrow, uh, another Lafco meeting. This is the county, and as I said, I will meet, I'm the, your Riverside County Flood Control District Meeting Representative for District Two. We're gonna be going over some new projects. I know Chad and Sam have some projects on that list we'll be looking at, and then we'll submit those, review them, submit them back in February for review to the, uh, Board Supervisors. But I really want to talk about, um, and I just lost mine. I'm a member of the Riverside County Farm Bureau, and, uh, during our last election, over two thousand people voted for Patrick Mitchell, and Patrick was really good about talking about farming here and our, and our large lots. So, if you have a chance, on April, on, on December fifteenth, introduction to small-scale organic farming for inland, Southern California. It's put on by UCR, the Agricultural and Natural Resources. So, if you get a chance, uh, Andy, can we get Mel Kelly to just throw that up there somewhere on the day, and I'll, I'll get to you. It's, it's a good resource for our people that are not equestrians and not animal keepers. They want to play in their backyard. That's a good deal. So, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. I have nothing to report at this time, except, uh, I've been taking, or Ted's been zooming in with the Zoom meetings, and, uh, what's that there, the cowboy riding away? Or, but, but, uh, he's already on the vector control board, and today, I introduced him to the RTA One Subcommittee. It's all Zoom, and then next Wednesday, we'll do the, uh, RCTC Board Meeting. I had him at a projects meeting, well, zooming in on a projects meeting last week, so introduced him to everybody, and that looks kind of like the cow that was laying down today that we had to go help with, about the way that cow was laying. All right, thank you. Greg, they left you out.
I tied with Robin. No, no report till next, uh, January. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, everybody. Now we'll go on to item two. Item two is the city council consent items. Uh, all items listed under the consent counter are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items be removed from the consent counter. Items removed from the consent counter will be separately considered under item number three of the agenda. Do we have any items we want to pull? Anybody?
F.
Mr. Mayor, to pull?
Which one?
F.
F?
I also like to pull B as in boy, C as in Charles, and F also.
F also? Wait just a minute. Is any speaker cards or emails to be read on these items?
I have no speaker cards for these items.
Okay, all right, Kevin, go ahead. Second.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hannah?
Yes.
Motion passed as unanimous.
Okay, Ted, you have item B?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, this is clarification on BS, the minutes on item six A of our last meeting. Uh, the minutes had me voting for that, and I, I did not. It was a no vote. We just get that correct and change it in minutes.
Mayor Hannah, yes. I have changed the vote from, um, Councilmember Hoffman voting aye to no, and then also to make a note on item six E, Councilmember Newton, I had him voting no, and I've changed it to aye. And those two have been changed and motion to, um, accept those changes.
Okay.
I just need a motion to accept the changes.
A motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Item B.
Okay, and the vote. Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hannah?
Yes.
Motion passed as unanimous. Thank you.
All right, Ted, you've got item C also.
Yeah, and it's directed at Chad, and I understand the cost impacts of those and, and that there are sufficient funds in there, but my concern is we talk about these unknowns, and that's what this costs so much. Didn't, wasn't there any plans or drawings of where this stuff was prior to we even starting this?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we, we always do our best in, when we hire our consultants to make sure that we have a good representation, the plans of what the utilities are, any conflicts, et cetera. In this particular case, um, the reality is we probably should have done more potholing before the projects in the part of the design to identify some of these utilities, specifically where they're at and that, that they exist. Some of them were unknown. We didn't know they were there and wouldn't have known to pothole there. Um, but, you know, so the reality is, is that the design could have been tighter, which would have resolved some of these issues. Um, uh, and then that's really all I can offer you as far as, but yes, we normally, we do due diligence, get all, all the plans from the utilities, uh, from gas, you know, any electric cable, so we identify that there are all these laterals to these properties. Um, in, in some cases, the problem is, is your, is where we say they are isn't accurate as far as the depth. We think they're gonna be clear of the alignment of the, of that main, and it turns out they're going right through it, and now they've got to adjust it, and they want to change order for that. So, the solution to that is really either to pothole all those utilities beforehand, which you pay quite a bit of money for every pothole, especially if you put a ton of laterals. So, part of it is a choice to, hopefully you get by and, and it, and it isn't a conflict, and you save that money that you would have paid in the design phase. So then sometimes you get bit because you don't do it. Um, and so what would have fixed this issue is we potholed it, but we would have spent quite a bit of money to do that potholing, to be as accurate as we could. Um, and that's what, as far as that goes. It's just choosing where we're gonna spend our money, either the front part or the back. Uh, in this case, we got bit on it with not doing enough potholing of the utilities to identify everything in the depths of those utilities, so, um...
So, as you're telling me, is, it's a hit and miss with the potholing to make, to get clarification or to make sure we're right there, but aren't there prior plans, or are they just non-existence?
Well, you gotta remember, some of the plans, especially when it's our own utilities, the, the plans don't remotely give you what the true, true information is. They're, they actually have their They're, the actual how they're installed versus maybe the plans, and you're talking about infrastructure that was put in 40 years ago, isn't, isn't accurate even if we had it. So we find out most of the time. But that's, but that's the reality of why, normally in the contracts, we require the contractor to pothole all the utilities. So they determine all the proper depths, where they're located, so that they're aware of any issues, so they can't come back later and say, well, I wasn't aware of this, I didn't know that existed, you know, so we understand and can design a change before if we need to. But again, it's, it's common practice to use what we know and make some assumptions on the depths, because if you're going to spend the money on all the utilities, when you have a water lateral, a sewer lateral, a gas lateral, and you're potholing for every one of them, for every resident, you're going to spend an awful lot of money. So we do make some assumptions, and we try to put language in the contract that makes, that makes the requirement of the contractor to liable to account for, and if there's any conflicts to, that they're responsible for those conflicts, based off of the information that we're representing, there is a lateral there, and to make accommodations accordingly if they have to adjust for it. We get in trouble when we don't identify there is a lateral there, or we think it's there, and they find one. And then that's another change. So on this case, it was a very small amount of contingency available, and we had a lot of little issues occur, and the contract was very aggressive in their desire for change orders. The amount of change orders is actually well more than double than we're actually paying. We really fought them back on a lot of this that they requested. But a lot of it, again, is, is really on just unknowns on the design, some issues that we had out there. So we really don't want to have these issues occur, for the most part. When you have a contractor with certain conflicts, they're usually pretty good about making adjustment, not coming asking for it, depending on what the issue is. So in this particular case, it was a contractor we hadn't used before, and they were, like I said, they were very aggressive on numerous changeable requests for every little thing that was different in our spec or our plan. But, and most of them, we got through and pushed off, but some of them, we really, we had to justify, it was extra asphalt here or there, and what had to be done, because we had to change an alignment or move the pipeline. But we really tried to minimize them. In this case, we unfortunately went over the 10% contingency.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's, that's what that 10% is for. But this one, so I would hope that going forward on these projects and similar projects, that we keep accurate records and for the next, whoever follows you in this thing, 10, 20 years from now, doesn't get stuck with the same situation, so we.
Yeah, I mean, certainly our plans and what was constructed, we have our ASBILs, and we're scanning those and documenting them, so they're part of our better permanent record for what we did, and identifies where those utilities were as part of that ASBIL. So we have a good recollection.
That man sitting right next to you, he can tell you right down, Nellie Weaver haul around those, it's a hit and miss. And it wouldn't matter to pothole them out or not, you don't even know where anything is. So that's just it. I just, if no one else has anything, I'll move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passed as unanimous.
Okay, our next item is item F, and we got two that pulled it, Ted and Greg. Greg, we'll let you go first, since you haven't got to talk yet.
Thanks. Okay, Chad?
Yes, sir.
Math time. Uh-oh. So when we originally had this $470,000 measure our rehab of our trails budget, based this on 3,300,000 square feet, and now we're 4 million feet before we realized there's an issue?
Correct.
And with another 300 to go, so we've got about a million square foot bust on our footage, which if I equate tall this and back into it, almost 15 miles of trail. It's not like we missed a cul-de-sac or anything. How did we miss this much square footage?
Sure, and it's a very good question. Primarily, it's because we, going into the project, we don't know the widths of our trails, and they vary 12 inch, or 12 feet, some are 10 feet, some are 8 feet. So when we went into the process, we said, so what should we estimate as far as the total linear or square footage? We approximately knew the linear footage of our, haven't mapped that out in our GIS system, but, so when we did the project, we, we used 10 feet as the assumed average times the linear miles to come up with our square footage. Reality is, we probably should have just been aggressive and said 12 is most likely what's out there in majority. So we undercut ourselves when we made that original estimate to the contractors. So primarily, that's on us. We just, we were way too conservative in our, in our total square footage, and we should have gone with the, would assumed, which should have been a 12-foot trail. And that's how we end up primarily short on most of it, as far as accounting for the amount of square footage we're at. The other issue that you pointed out was, yes, we were not tracking it or paying attention to the amount of work being done in relation to the PO, and that's on me. We were mainly focused on, are we going to get to the end date when we planned, which was at the end of this calendar year? And myself and the contractor both recognizing and were commiserating with each other just how much of a goof-up that was to not recognize what you've already submitted invoices for and your square footage, we're already reaching the PO, and we've got X much more to do, and not addressing this issue at least two months ago rather than now. It does, again, two months ago, again, we would have had a rougher estimate than we do now. I mean, so in hindsight, getting most of the work done, we're a lot closer on that remaining amount that needs to be done, and the contractor is holding himself to that estimate, that it will not go past it, even if it does, we will not pay him for anything more than that. And he's acknowledged that that's, he's fine with that, he knows that. And then it may end up being less based off what actually gets done when we do the final measurements. And obviously, he's not going to get paid, he only gets paid per square foot of what he maintains. So the issue of it not coming, or not us realizing there was a bust, should have happened months ago, and we just weren't paying attention. We were focused on just keep it going, keep going, get this, get it, get them moving, try to get it done by our deadline, and neither of us were paying attention to the end dollar. So that, I mean, it's on me as the director.
Okay. I mean, it, a couple other items, but I appreciate you owning up to that, because with one of your predecessors, we had a similar situation. And it just basically, you know, during the course of events, it got away. So, yeah, I'll agree with you, I'll put that burden on you. One of my concerns is that also, originally, we put an allowance in for decomposed granite, for DG. How does this additional square footage impact that allowance? And what, are there going to be additional costs for purchases?
We looked at that specifically, because I knew it would be a question. So we already have almost all the DG tickets through almost the end of November, and they're only expecting to continue work maybe through the second week in December and be done. And we came up with an estimate based on what we spent so far, and we feel we will be able to capture all the DG needed within the 50,000 that's been allocated in addition to the original amount for the contract. So there's no issue that I'm aware of or expect regarding, we're comfortable with that 50,000 covered pretty much what we needed.
Okay. With, and with this, so we won't have a bust?
No.
Okay, with this additional footage?
Specifically looked at that one, because I want to make sure we address that issue.
I think for the most part, it's, you know, the work, the work is needed, the work has to be done. I want you to do me one more favor, though. There's always been varying lengths of, how many miles of trail do we have? You know, from 70 to 140 miles, okay? Can you give us some statement of fact to council that says, we have so many miles of improved trail, unimproved trail, backyard trail?
Correct.
So maybe we can have some, an official understanding of what we really have.
Right. And this project definitely helps in that, because
Okay.
Not only is the contractor measuring out, but the staff has to go out and measure everything out to verify the quantities before we ever pay anything. So now, even though we only had, you know, lines on a map that showed the alignment, now we'll have verification really of also the square footage and the linear footage of miles of trails that we, that we should have. So certainly, our numbers should improve to be a lot more accurate now, and we can bring back that refined number. And again, as I remind you, we, that number will be based off of what type of trail you're talking about. So it could be 100 miles of the city trails versus the 15 miles or 30 miles of the nature trails, then the trails that we try to map out out in the San Diego River. So we try to get all of it.
Okay.
But we can give you.
Well, let's say the ones we're working on, that, you know, that would just be improved, unimproved, and backyard.
We'll definitely have a much better number, especially for the ones we did, because obviously, we didn't do any of the LMDs except for LMD1 that was included in this work, because it's not part of the, the LMD's maintenance requirements, is to maintain the trail. So certainly, every, anything outside the LMDs will have a really good defined number as far as square footage and linear footage.
I know Councilmember Hoffman has a couple of comments. I'd just like to say that, but I will go ahead and support this additional funding, primarily based on the company's already done the work.
Correct.
And, and at no fault of his own.
No.
Okay.
It's on public work.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Ted?
Well, Chad, I'm glad you admitted up to it, because that's what I was, and Councilman Newton already talked about the predecessor over, I think, line painting and $25,000. Whoops. And at least you admitted the fact that he got away from you. And that's what my question was, is you said, okay, you're trying to get it done, it got away from you. And that's something, I agree, we're going to pay, because it's, it needs to be, I think, though, that we just, as you realize it, all we need to know is ahead of time that what's going on. If you need more, hey, there's nothing perfect out there, and you said this yourself, there, our trails aren't standard, there isn't any width, aren't standard, because of the different parts of town. Now, up in the hills, it's different. There, there's standard, pretty much standard width, but down here, there's not. So that's one of the things that happens, just, this is one of those things that you admitted that you knew it, and that was okay. But I just didn't want this guy to say, hey, I got all this done, and.
Right.
So, but I appreciate the honesty on that, so.
And I would like to mention, what's great about this, at least this portion of the project, is when we get into the future years and discussions about the ongoing maintenance process, we'll have a very refined number to base future contracts on, because we'll know the square footage is not going to change. So that's what will be helpful, is we'll have much more refined information for the next phase of the trail maintenance project, that will ultimately bring back to council for approval.
Okay. Just make sure he's putting enough water down, or getting that compaction down. Okay? Because otherwise, we're going to be gone. All right? With that, unless Mr. Newton has any more, anybody else, I move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passed as unanimous.
Okay, we'll go to item five, is discussion action items, is order of presentation for discussion items, staff report presentation, council questions of staff, public speakers in favor, against, or neutral, council discussion and action. So 5A is discussion regarding restoration of irrigation in specific areas of landscape maintenance, District Two. And that's Deputy City Manager, Mr. Petrie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On November 4th, the council had asked staff to agendize additional conversations related to maintenance of LMD number two. So tonight, we're before you to kind of reiterate what we went over back in, on November 4th, but also to talk about some potential options, as part of the discussion was, are there any other options perhaps to, particularly the outside areas of this district and the parkways? Are we able then to maybe put those back into maintenance and what type of costs we're are? So I'm going to do a quick presentation tonight related to that. So we are, this is Landscape Maintenance District number two, 219 homes within this district. The areas that are highlighted are all part of the assessment areas in which maintenance has occurs. As you know, we had a 218 hearing, we've actually had two 218 hearings for increasing cost here. Both those 218 hearings failed. So to stay within the engineer's budget, we had to reduce certain levels of maintenance. So those areas that are maintained currently are the green particular areas of the assessment district. All those areas currently in red are all removed from the assessment district and are no longer receiving maintenance. That has caused some issues in relationship to materials within the parkway on the interior parkways, as well as the exterior parkways along Norcal Drive, where materials have started to die, vegetation is stressed out, both on the interior and exterior areas. The one thing that the council approved at a meeting, two meetings ago, was for us to actually do fuel modification on the large slopes. We have gone out successfully for bid on that. We did get those bids back, and we will be, I believe, next week, we start on the fuel modification program within those slopes. Saying that, the irrigation is still removed, we will be removing all dead vegetation out of those particular areas as part of that program, and reducing any particular, particular fire hazards that are along the back of those slopes and those homes. Again, this is Norcal Hills Road, slope A. This is part of the whole entire area that will be modified as far as for fuel modification. This is, again, another area of slope A. You can see the vegetation is either dead or stressed. Slope B is this particular area in here, you can see where we have some of the materials still doing okay. It is stressed, and you have some dead vegetation here. The dead vegetation will be removed, vegetation that is not sustainable will all be removed. We're going to try and maintain and make sure that all the irrigation stays intact, and that way, should we ever decide to bring water back to those locations, that is. So the, part of the fuel modification requires the contractor to make sure that he tries to maintain that irrigation in best working conditions. Should we have some problems, then we'll go in and fix those problems as we go along. Some of the considerations for discussions related to any other modifications the council would want to consider, in our presentation back on the 4th, we talked about the interior slopes, Norcal Hills Road, and this is what you, the City Council appropriated. $30,000 is a one-time estimate for fuel modification, and then we have an annual cost for fuel modification of $5,000 annually. That was approved for the exterior slopes on Norcal Hills. Option two was not considered at the time. Landscape Maintenance District exterior parkways on Norcal Hills Road, as you know, that is, particularly, there's trees, and we have approximately a three-foot parkway along the trail and Norcal Hills Road. We had, at the time, we had talked about a couple different options. Option one, removal of shrub plant material and leave bare soil and natural, hills and parkways, set up irrigation just to water the trees, reinstated irrigation, and by annual weed abatement, we put the cost for one time in that and as a recurring cost. Option two had removal of any dead shrub plant material and replace bare areas with new plant material on parkway. Cost includes water and maintenance to be reinstated, one cost, one-time cost, and then reoccurring cost. Option, oh, let me go backwards here. Option three, remove all shrub plant material, replaced with new shrub plant material on parkway, cost included water, maintenance, and to be reinstated. So we would take the whole parkway and bring it back into service.
Brian, I've got a question. Back that up there, please. On that option one, remove all shrub and leave the bare soil, what are you going to do about erosion? do about erosion from rains?
Well, this, this is particularly a flat area and, and this particular item where we would set up the irrigation just, just to water the trees. So we would put bubblers at the trees so we wouldn't have any excessive water in that. All the water on the slope are turned, is turned off. So anything that we would get during rainfall, we may have some erosion within that three-foot parkway. However, we do have some maintenance that we would be doing in there, but pretty much all this is would be, is actually, uh, the trees would be the only thing that would be being watered within that parkway.
Thank you.
One of the things that we had a discussion on and looking at options outside of those three options that we provided to you back in November was to look at maybe doing something around those trees to give some color. So we could establish rosemary in a small area or patch. There's a similar, uh, look across the street that Corona has done. They have taken their parkway though and have put a stabilizer in there so if you have erosion, it sheets off. So it, it really reduces that problem pretty significantly. And so we looked at this as an option. This would be another option. It's a clean look. It, it also helps us a little bit related to our trail. One of our problems when we have rosemary, that sometimes the trail backs up and we get buildup along the interior edge of the parkway along and the outside part of that trail. So when we started to look at the other options as a full consideration, we looked at the interior parkways within the LMD. And this is assuming all trees survive, no cost estimate for tree replacement. And that would be to remove all dead shrub plant material and leave parkways within the assessment district bare. Do not reinstate irrigation trees or landscaping would be the responsibility of homeowners, no maintenance. Estimated cost for removal of dead plant material is $37,000, a one-time cost. If the tree dies, the tree will be cut at the base within the parkway and the root would be removed. There would be no root ball left. Number two, remove all dead shrub plant material and leave parkways within an assessment district bare. Reinstate irrigation. City would assume a cost of water landscaping will be the homeowner's responsibility. So we have estimated cost to remove all the dead plant material there at $47,000 and then estimated cost to reinstate water for one year and the city to maintain irrigation at all the trees would be $30,000. And we would have a reoccurring cost for water in that area. So we did a summary of all of those options back on the fourth. We did add a new option, which is option number four, which is clear, all dead vegetation to bare soil, set drip irrigation to water approximately 100 trees and add a six-foot strip of new rosemary positioned around each tree. That would be similar to what we see across the street. That would also put in some, where we would stabilize that DG in that particular area. There is an estimated one-time cost of $29,000 for option four and reoccurring cost for watering of $9,756. Obviously, the parkways, we didn't add anything more than what we, I just mentioned to you. And so that concludes my update for you and kind of re, going over what we talked about back in November and staff is prepared to take direction from council and do whatever you ask us to do, so.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, Kevin, we'll start with you, questions?
I have a question. I, um, I think we need to water the trees, get that going, in my opinion. And I kind of like the idea of matching across the street with the rosemary and the, I like what Corona's done over there and that way it would give a similar look. I agree with you, Brian. I kind of, the rosemary, the problem is, is rosemary eventually gets really stimmie and ugly, but I kind of like what, what they did across the street. So I, I would be in favor of that. In terms of the interior, you know, I take care of my trees and if they, if they vote in, vote in the tax increase, which really isn't that much, then we can do something. But I'd like to focus on just the one street, so. Which, which one is that, Brian? The rosemary? The one with a square of rosemary around it? Yeah. Except the, across the street, they have a, a concrete kind of box, don't they? Or do they? Would we do something like that or just grow?
I think, I would suggest that we-
Yeah. So what's the cost of this one again? You're looking at a Chinese restaurant, too many options.
In option four-
Yeah, for me, that's, that- That's the one I like, option four. Thank you, Brian.
Ted?
Okay, Brian, because in the paperwork we, we were given, there's no option four. So that's just added right there? Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Well, I'll go with the interior parkway first. That's a responsibility, the, the owners. You know, we, that's a lot of, a big chunk of change and they decided on their 218 hearing not to, to do it. A lot of people have taken, a lot of residents there have taken it upon themselves to irrigate, to take care of their parkways. It's going to be up to their neighbors and neighbor pressure and some of our code enforcement say, hey, clean it up. As far as the exterior parkways, don't put rosemary in. Everybody's yanking it out. It's dead, it woody's. It's terrible. After about five years, you got so much thatch in there and it's dead. And if it's not going to get watered all the time, it's ugly. I mean, that's bottom line. You'd be better off with bare strips. And the ironic part of that to think, in LMD three, where we watered the trees and the parkway, and the parkways, how many trees do we lose there? Six? The wind knocked over? How many, six? Yeah, we lost six trees in there in irrigated spots. The trees we didn't water in LMD two during those winds? We didn't lose any. I mean, that's-
Those are a lot more mature trees.
I know they're more mature. I'm just saying, the reason those other trees fell is because they were getting overwatered and irrigated. I'm just making the point here is that the other trees survived. We need to water those trees though because they're stressed. But as far as putting rosemary or any type of shrubbery back in there, I'm for leaving it, I'm for leaving it bare. There are plenty of materials out there. There that'll fit in that parkway, that will absorb the water, that will compact and that will act as that. There, you go see your buddies at Gale Material and they will show you that it will do it. And it has a lower maintenance cost than trying to put irrigation and plants in there. Because what's going to happen? If we strip it all out, the, all the fountain grass is going to take seed in there anyway that's floating around this area and it's just going to grow. So it's going to do it on its own, wherever the water's going to come up.
Option four is, just so you know, is also, that is putting a bubbler at each tree. So it's not, we're not, we're moving away from spray unless we, so we would be going to a different irrigation system.
But those weeds, essentially fountain grass is a, is an opportunity plant that's going to grow. I don't care how much water, if it gets water, it's going to seed and grow. And then as far as the exterior slopes go and the options up there, that's one of the things that, how much, we've taken all that, it's all acacia up there, right?
Yes.
And it's all gotten woody and big and thatchy and-
Yeah, based on what's going to happen now is those slopes will be cleared, primarily almost all of it will be cleared completely off during this.
So, and one of the options was going to put something back in there or you're just going to leave it blank?
But that would be an option currently right now with what's been approved by council is nothing will go back on those slopes.
Because we, you just got to look at something, right now, I wouldn't put anything back in there, but I would-
There's no plan to put anything back up there.
I would look at, trying to look for something other than acacia at this point.
The lowboy would give a different look and it's, and it's, and the lowboy acacia is much different. But we're open to looking at various plant pallets.
I mean, if you could look at a lantana or something that's going to grow and add a little color. And the other question, how many water meters are up there in that area? I mean, just on the exteriors. I'm not talking about-
On the exterior, right there, we have two.
That's all? The two for the exterior and then the, the parkway exterior and the exterior slopes?
On, on Norco Hills Drive, I believe we have two meters only on that locate, at that location.
How, how big are they, Chad? Are they the big expensive ones?
The four inch or, no? No, I don't-
They're probably twos, aren't they?
Two inch.
I'm just curious because I mean, that's, that's the big cost, is the meters.
Our fixed cost is, is where our cost is regarding irrigation. And, and our unit cost can be depending on climate and other things and other variables that happen, but that's an ongoing cost no matter what we have that.
Right, I'm saying, that's, the water isn't the big thing. It's the cost of that meter and how many meters we're going to pay for is how much water we turn on, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I know it's a cost. I'm just, but the-
Top of that, you have your-
The top of that, you have the meters. If you're only getting two meters, that's not as bad as trying to fund for 10.
I don't, and I don't have that with me, but I actually-
That's fine, I just-
Numbers, but it's included in the cost.
Okay. All right, thank you. You can skip on it, Chad, it's all right.
All right, I'll agree with Ted on that rosemary. I, I see how that stuff lasts and you wind up with just a bunch of twigs sticking up there. Think it'd be something easier to put in there and make it look a lot better.
And we, we'd be happy when we, if, based on the council's direction tonight, is to bring back some other options or plant pallets that could be conducive to that, kind of staying within the same cost boundaries that we've anticipated here. But, and we can bring that back to council. We're going to, whatever direction is chosen tonight, we're going to have to bring some sort of action back to you anyway.
Okay, do we have any public speakers request? Oh, okay, go ahead.
I know, I've been quiet tonight.
Oh, I thought I already got you guys. Sorry about that.
Brian, on option number four, what kind of maintenance, if any, do you foresee on whatever plant is put in around the trees?
What we planned in there is that whole parkway, we would actually spray and do weeds in there too. So if we have bare areas in between those, we would be removing those weeds as well. So that's part of the ongoing cost or maintenance. And then we, so, and as far as the maintenance, you know, obviously we need to hedge, remove grassy weeds and stuff out of those particular sections. So this is an estimate based on what we look at as for square footage, so along there. So based on that, we, we would be maintaining those particular parkways and this would also include the reoccurring cost, which is maintenance plus water. Now, we would reduce, our water gets reduced as far as the unit cost because we're going to go to a different system where we're going to be going to bubblers. So we can adjust that cost there. Our fixed cost is going to remain the same. However, this would also be maintaining that weed tree and making sure that those particular areas are also maintenance that we would add landscaping in.
Okay, so to clarify, the $9,756 recurring covers annual water, annual weed maintenance in the areas that don't have landscape materials and maintaining whatever plant material would be put under or around the trees?
Yes, that is included.
The weed maintenance in the bare areas, is that a manual weed abatement or are you going to go in and spray? And if you're going to go in and spray, what are you going to spray? And then are you going to leave the dead weeds there or would those, would somebody go back and remove those?
Well, our practice is, is if we're going to spray and our, our, we use Roundup as our, is the chemical of choice right now, although there are some other herbicides out there we could look at. But Roundup is what we primarily use, particularly in the right of way. And then we would remove any of those, any grassy weeds after, after we spray, then we would come back and have to remove those. But we're looking at, our estimate is really, we feel that maybe, and when talking to Todd, he thought that we might be able to get it by with one, no more than twice a year with that type of maintenance. If we had to have more active maintenance in then, then the cost could go up. If we're having, let's say we have a lot of rain and we get it cleaned up and then we have another thing and they just keep coming, then our costs are going to adjust because I think our frequency just for those bare areas is twice a year.
Okay. So when we look at the LMDs, and this might be off topic, so if it is, please let me know, but are these the same kind of options and proposals that were given to the LMD? Because I'm looking at $9,756 as a recurring fee spread across the LMD, doesn't seem like a huge amount of money to me. And I'm just wondering if when we had the Prop 218 hearing, were these options on the table for those residents?
Well, when we, when we had the 218 hearing and we had our meetings, the, the objective there was to maintain what was existing. Okay? So we didn't look at removal of vegetation and all of those things. The assessment district didn't even have the money to even do the capital one-time cost. So obviously, we will be having our spring meetings and we will have more discussions with them. And there's a lot of what I want to call discussion up there about wanting to relook at a 218. I see that our, our discussions with the residents there has, that needs to be, come back to us in a sense that you, you need to have some unification that that's what you really want to do. But we can look at those particular options at that point. But it, when we first looked at this, it was to sustain what was existing there.
Okay, and then-
And the biggest, and one of our biggest costs in that district is water. I would say it's the second biggest cost. The biggest cost is the trails. We maintain all those trails and those are still part of the assessment right now. And, and this particular development has a lot of higher, steeper grades. So we have a lot of erosion problems, particularly during rainy season. So we're out now preparing sandbagging and doing that for rainy season through all of the districts. But that level of maintenance we provide in those districts is when, after rains, it's priority number one to get, you know, driveways open and people have access in and out of their property. So that's just not the case everywhere else. That is a higher level of maintenance and requires a lot more labor.
Right. So I guess just in kind of conclusion, the whole bare slopes is upsetting to me because of the erosion issue and is it going to be an issue this year and next year? We don't know. It's whenever the rains are heavy and come through. So I do have concern with bare soil. And then the last comment would be like to my colleagues up here on the rosemary or even lantana or whatever, I think any plant, if properly maintained, will not turn thatchy and woody and those kind of things. And so that's why I ask you the maintenance question because if the rosemary is properly maintained, it doesn't get like that. Or if the lantana is properly maintained, it doesn't get like that. So I want to make sure, you know, whatever's put in, for me, it's not about what's put in, it's about what is the maintenance going to be? And if, if you don't intend to go by there except once a year, then you pick a plant that fits what you intend to do.
Right.
Not what's going to look pretty. So that's all I have.
Newton?
Thanks, Berwin. So, I guess it was after Thanksgiving, I met with Brian and his staff on Norco Hills Road. And I will say this, as far as our decision to do the fuel modification, it was certainly correct. We were stopped by residents that were driving by, folks walking down the trail, and all of them expressed their concerns about the, the fire hazard. So, kind of the way I'm looking at this is with, with option number four, is that we need to, you know, get water to the trees. That's a valuable asset to us. to, you know, get water to the trees. That's a valuable asset to us and we need to protect it. The photos that you showed of the opposite side of the street, I'm fine with that. If you, if you have a small growth area around the tree, I'll kind of go with Robin, that as long as you maintain it. I have no preference to plants at all. I would agree with Ted, though, for the gravel part of the DG that we use some type of polymer to bind that. But I think overall, this is just a, it's a temporary measure to protect the asset that come the spring when we have LMD two and, and the Prop 218 hearings, my feeling was leave that slope bare. Let the residents get tired of looking at it and, and maybe this time they'll get more than the three votes that they were shy and, and pass the increase. So I'm just looking at maintaining the asset temporarily of, you know, watering the trees and, you know, we do a little planting around it. But Brian, was that kind of the gist of our discussion? There's something else I'm missing is, oh, I'm sorry. And it may be a John thing, that some of those property owners own all the way down to the trail.
That's correct.
And don't we have to do some type of legalese that we're doing fuel modification on somebody's private property?
But we have an easement. I mean, that was, if you remember the discussion we had, that it was, it was...
You're asking me to remember a discussion we had?
Yeah, I know. Don't know that we want to go through this before, but we discovered that apparently, even though it was intended to be, it was not conveyed to the city, but we've been maintaining the slopes. So we've just, we're gonna continue to do that or, or not do it as the case may be.
Okay. And also what we talked about was there's a drainage channel midway up that slope that will be cleaned out when the fuel modification is ongoing.
That's correct. That'll be part of, that's part of the scope of work. The only other thing is, is in our discussions was, is, you know, which has come up related to rainy seasons and things like that and erosion on those slopes. Our superintendent feels pretty comfortable with how we're going to treat it, that we should be able to sustain those slopes. Remember, when we look at fuel modification, it isn't a, in some places it may be a totally removal and other areas you're reducing that potential fuel. So you still may have some short plant material. The reason for the annual ongoing maintenance is to keep that fuel short so that it doesn't have the fuel that if it was four feet tall and to create a problem for the fire department. So that's really our objective in there is to really look at that, particularly around all of the residential homes, really keep the fuel very, very short. Look in those particular areas, not knowing what exactly will be the, what the council would decide, we are going to try to, because I think that was the council's directive, was during that, is to try to, to make sure that we maintain the irrigation system that is existing. Should that need to ever be decided to be turned back on, then it at least is intact versus minor type of repairs.
Okay. And, and my opinion may be different, is that this is only a temporary, this cost is only a temporary measure that eventually, if, if that 218 hearing passes, this cost then becomes absorbed by the LMD as long as the LMD is functioning.
Right.
Or, or it increases the, the debt that's owed.
So as we wrote in the staff report, we will be looking at this because what's, what's happening even with this cost, that the Assessment District is occurring additional debt. So currently, right now, their debt is about $86,000 roughly, and they're to repay back that $16,000 a year. There's a line item in there for that. If you push or forego that, that can be used towards these costs. However, you're still going to increase debt over time. So if the residents come back, I most certainly would be suggesting that we go in and this be part of the 218 hearing and their cost unless we're directed otherwise.
And we can deal with that in the spring?
Yes.
Okay. So my next question's for Chad. What, you have one meter and what size?
One meter, it's a two inch.
Okay.
That's along, that's along Norco Hills Road, for specifically that section.
And what's the monthly meter charge on that two-inch meter that you would charge us temporarily?
Unfortunately, I don't have the, the service meter rates with me, so I don't know. I would, I'd be guessing.
No guess?
I don't even want to guess because it probably won't even be close.
I mean, it may not be a, a big amount, but one thing we could do is we could, since we're paying for it, not the LMD, we could waive the meter fee temporarily to ourselves. I mean, we're charging one pocket and putting it in another.
I don't think you can, but I would defer to John.
Why?
Yeah. Because you can't. You can't take one pocket and put in the other.
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe I don't understand your question then.
Okay. So we have cost of water.
Right.
And we have, which I understand, and we have a meter fee on top of that.
Okay.
Okay. And the city is paying this 29, or the $9,000 or the $29,000.
Right.
Okay. And it, and we're gonna do this temporarily. Why can't we waive paying the meter fee? That charge? I guess what I'm saying is Chad's gonna charge us a meter fee. It's gonna come out of one pocket and it's going back in another.
That, I guess my question wants to be that the cost you're paying is for the water fund to provide that service. And you're paying your fair share like every other resident pays for that service.
Yeah, I mean, that, that is the rule, that we can't waive. I mean, we could, if we could do that, then we could say we're not paying for any water under any circumstances anywhere. Or doesn't have to do with the LMD.
Can we do that? Okay. It's a good idea.
John?
Well, look, more money in the budget after all.
There you go.
All right.
That's all I have.
Okay. Now, do we have any public cards?
We have no speaker cards for this item.
Okay. We'll bring it back for council action. Make a motion.
Motion.
We'll have a motion in a second to approve option four. Please vote.
Councilmember Grumeyer? Councilmember Hoffman? Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
With, with that, we'll bring back an action for the council and we'll provide some more breakdowns for you. Thank you.
Item six is continued public hearings. Staff presentation, council questions of staff, open the public hearing, public speakers in favor, against, or neutral. Close the public hearing, council discussion and action is item A is amending Measure R, and that's the Deputy City Manager, Public Works Director. Y'all get to share that one, huh?
I'll kick it over to Chad. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tonight before you is a recommendation to approve two additional capital programs for the Measure R program. One is the River Road Parkway Improvement Project and Playground Replacement Project. These two projects were presented to the Measure R Committee. The Measure R Committee supported the funding to move forward with these two projects and make recommendations to City Council. The, I just want to make a note that the Playground Replacement Project also has a contribution from Prop 68 grant funds to contribute towards that particular project. Tonight, what's before you is to approve these final recommendations and as to be added to the capital improvement program for Measure R. I'll have Chad talk a little bit about the first project, which is the trail project.
So the project we're bringing forth to council for recommendation is along River Road. It's been a long, yep, it's on. It's been a longstanding issue in regards to maintenance. It's a basically an unimproved shoulder. And we've routinely gone out there, especially after rainy seasons, which we haven't one in a while. They get a lot of growth material. You can see that basically, and this is the area from Kip's Corner all the way to Corydon. We've routinely gone out there with staff or in commonly our CAL FIRE crews or court crews to help mitigate that and pull brush and debris. But we wanted to really kind of find a long-term solution to implement what type and type of improvement we could do along that area. You know, and we originally basically discussed with the, with the Streets and Trails Utilities Commission and the Measure R, we gave basically two options. One, putting in a sidewalk with a parkway or putting in a trail. There is a nexus for a connection related to the trail because there is a trail that comes to the end of Kip's Corner and also a trail that certainly goes at the end of Corydon. It actually, actually goes across to the shopping center where State of Brothers is. So we discussed those two options. It's basically just giving you an idea of the area, just to make you aware of that slope area is actually belongs to the adjacent property owners. And so when we're talking about any type of improvements, we're talking about the alignment along what you see this closer wall in this picture. That is where, if you extend it out, and I'll show you some pictures going down, we, we're basically going that 12 feet from the curb all the way to that wall. That's basically the, the right-of-way area that exists. That other area up there that's currently unmaintained, unmaintained is, belongs to each of the property owners. Normally, we will issue them a notice to abate that area when it becomes a problem. And those residents are usually pretty good about doing that. I think part of that hillside has already been abated recently because these are older pictures. But just make sure that that area does not belong to the city. That is private property. Those are Edison's lines there. They have an easement for that. But that's in Edison, that's private, actual private property. Couple more pictures, just kind of showing you that, that segment down there. Again, that's the, the real alignment is where that, that, that wall is. That's how far space we have to work with in the public right-of-way. So basically going from Kip's Corner all the way down to Corydon, we were proposing to do a trail. We're identifying that the parkway is about 2,100 linear feet from Kip's Corner to Corydon. Ongoing maintenance issue with repeated weed abatement annually. A new sidewalk or trail could be installed to improve the overall aesthetics of that area. For a trail, we identified that the trail would create a loop system, but would require ongoing maintenance in regards to just what we're doing now with our trail system. The maintenance would be the trail basically itself, and most likely we would do a, and recommended, we discussed, putting in a trail fence. There wouldn't be any parkway other than maybe about a foot to two feet, maybe. It pretty much would be lining it because there's the road, that area is only about 12 feet anyway. So it might be actually a narrower trail. It might end up being 10 foot with a slight parkway. Or we might just go the full 12 feet and put the fence right along the road edge. We still have to decide how we want to accommodate that. But again, it'd still be a functional new trail to be used. So we can't put trees or anything else in there if we, it, it's just not enough room. But the, we'll have the visual element of having the, the white vinyl fencing in place to help delineate the area, have a separation and help with the aesthetics. There was a discussion, again, from the commission, specifically Streets Trails Utilities Commission about the speeds being, certainly it's a 50 mile an hour roadway, which means people are going probably 20 miles beyond that. And whether or not that was a concern, especially for inexperienced riders, did they want to promote a trail area where it might be potentially hazardous for inexperienced riders? Ultimately, the, the commission still voted to do a trail. They felt there was something that people could make their own decisions whether or not they want to go that route. Because there is an adjacent trail going down Santa Anita, which is parallels that. People could take that and get to it. It's away from the roadway. So, but again, it's, it's an opportunity to improve the area. And Street, certainly Streets Trails Utilities Commission and the Measure R team, commission ultimately supported the use of putting in a trail. There are some issues that may impact us, our ability to put in a trail. I want to make sure everybody's aware of, and this was explained to STUCK and to Measure R. There are utility boxes down at the end near Corydon that we have to mitigate. Because if we're gonna do it to our trail standard, we need to bury those boxes four inches below the DG. So it's not a tripping hazard that becomes an issue. So we need to work with those utilities. We haven't done that discussion yet. I think everything is, to me, solvable. It just depends on the cost. In this particular case, it's not a public widening project where I can require the utilities to move their, their utilities or boxes that might be in the way in the, in that widening. This is really just improving a parkway. So we're anticipating that most cases, the utilities will, would probably accommodate our request, but it's gonna be at their, at our cost. So we have to determine what that would be. And we haven't done that initial work yet. So if it becomes a problem, cost-wise or whatnot, we will certainly bring it back to council. If the money that we currently are hoping to get allotted for this project isn't enough, or what those logistics might be, or if we need to go to a different type of option because it's not feasible. But we're gonna do that legwork to find out before we ever officially kick the project off and actually construct something. But I want to make you aware of that. There is still issues we have to resolve to make it a fully functional trail that is safe. These are those utilities I was talking about. We have a sewer manhole there that needs to be lowered. That's easy enough to do. The city can do that. We also have Edison vault there that we need to have lowered. Again, we have to find out what's in there, what the issue is. If it's just a conduit, we can probably easily get the box lowered and work with them. Most likely, we would leave the box here that's, I think is AT&amp;T, which is on, on your left. It's against the wall. And then we would, and then potentially even leave the cable box. We just lower it below grade, to at grade, because that would probably be at the fence alignment when we put the fence in. So the biggest issue is really just dealing with our own sewer and Edison and trying to get those lowered. But again, there's just some things we need to deal with, but I don't think they're insurmountable. And we don't quite know how the cost, but that's what we're dealing with. So my proposal is to not address or have, or mess with the AT&amp;T tall box or the cable box that's closer to the street. We can certainly look into it, but I don't think it's cost-wise worth doing because they're basically at the outer edges of the trail that would be available. And whether or not we think it would be an impediment or a problem for horse riders to have to deal with in that one segment. So we did discuss the sidewalk for, and, and again, sidewalks are relatively maintenance-free. The trees, we would, in this case, we would have a parkway because the, of the, the width of the current area, we'd have probably a six-foot trail and probably a six-foot parkway. And if we did that, then we would certainly put trees in that area and try to at least landscape it. We put watering, dedicated watering system for that. And then certainly the parkway would require ongoing watering and maintenance, tree trimming over time. We have the grant that's available right now. We can plant the trees basically using that grant. And that's being funded separately. So there are certainly trees there we could plant along that area if you went to a sidewalk option. But there are also still the conflicts related to the utility manholes and vaults even with that project. But that's easier to maintain because in, in this case, you're putting them at grade, at the level of the sidewalk, and you're not necessarily gonna be lowering all that much. And they're easy access for the utilities. They are not gonna object. Versus the, the trail, we have to lower at least four inches below the trail, so it's not a tripping issue. So those two items that we did talk about, but ultimately, again, the staff was recommending for, for our purposes, we were recommending a sidewalk option. It's, it's lower maintenance and it keeps folks away from the higher traffic. But ultimately, STUCK recommended install the trail, and so did Measure R. The estimated costs we have for the trail construction, demo is about $30,000. And then the city provided, we would provide the DG and then trail and fencing, we've got another $26,000. Sidewalk option, that's $100,000. And that also includes, just so you're aware, there's the, I guess the southeastern side of River Road and, and Kip's Corner. There's currently a section there adjacent to a home that's unimproved that leads to the shopping center. We would extend and certainly do a sidewalk We would extend and certainly do a sidewalk in that area, so we can clean up that area, because it's basically got a sidewalk in front of the old shopping center, but then it stops at that last home. So, we'd want to kind of clean that section up too, and put a sidewalk in. If ultimately, if we do a trail, we would still do that improvement of a sidewalk, so we finish that off. Because we want to complete that whole area on River Road. So, we would still clean that area up, that's on, adjacent to the, the shopping center, so that, that sidewalk gets completed all the way to that edge. Because there is no trail that leads to that shopping center. It's, it's pretty much all been permanent scape as far as putting sidewalk. But we'll finish that off, to make sure that we're not skipping or missing an area. That's Brian. So, basically, what, just for your edification, when we did take it to Measure R, because of the unknowns and costs related to the trail construction, if we do it, because it is less, reestimating in total than the sidewalk construction, we did ask them for approval to, for the full amount of $100,000, so that we would hopefully cover any of our incidental costs, especially related to relocating the utilities. So, as far as the request and what we, what Measure R authorized, we did ask them for the full amount, just in case, depending on which, which element council approved, but also to cover our costs. But they are recommending also that the trail be constructed, not the sidewalk. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding that, before going on to the other projects that Brian has.
Okay, before we get to these other guys, I just want to thank you for letting the Streets and Trails Commission look at this before you brought it to us. Because the trail discussion is important. So, anybody got any questions or comments? Ted?
I do.
Greg? Go ahead, Greg.
What's your cost allocation for that additional sidewalk you want to run by the shopping center?
Uh, that's within the $100,000 we estimated, because we went from the shopping center all the way down to Corydon, and that would cover all the sidewalk if we did it. So, that cost is in there. So, it's probably about, I think it's a, it was about $9,000 to $10,000 for the additional sidewalk in that area.
So, with the trail option, 664 and another nine then?
At least, yeah. I'd say.
Okay.
Plus whatever the utility cost might come, yeah. Certainly should be under the $100,000.
And then I know it's, not per our standards, okay? But going back to the trail option, manhole and this utility vault, whether it's phone or electric, those are all traffic rated, correct?
Uh, they should be, yes.
So, I like the trail option, but at the same time, like any of the trails that we ride around town, I mean, we go around fire hydrants, telephone poles, everything else. I, I don't want to get into a major deal of relocating utilities. The way, go around it or go over it?
The only issue is, it's so low laying, is, is I think it's one thing to have a, a pertinence that you physically, it's tall, and you go around it. But these are low, and if, whether it's a tripping hazard for the horses as they're walking, again, and I defer to any horse expert to say, if that, as it currently looks, would be an issue if we left it at grade. And if it'd be fine, I'm, I'm okay with doing that too. It's just exception to our standard.
I guess it's who, who you're going to ask, right? On that, so.
But I, I want to put in the work initially, see if we can get it done, then it's perfect. And then if they don't make a fuss, if it becomes an issue, I'll absolutely bring it back.
And if they're just rings, then you just remove a ring and drop it.
Right, exactly.
That's all I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Robin? Kevin? Ted?
Yeah, I do. Well, you answered my question, how many, those are the only utilities?
Correct, that we're, that we're aware of, that are above ground.
Okay, what's, what about the gas line that runs there? That in the street? Because all those little, all those little signs that there say, "Gas Line."
Right, but there are already, there are, it, we, the assumed alignment is, again, the sign that's, the little post that's there says there's a gas line in the vicinity, but they're all well deeper than the, the four inches we're going to remove of the top soil.
Okay, alright, so.
To put new DG down. So, that's not a concern.
Okay, well, my concern is if I wanted to put a trail fence there, the depth of the trail fence.
Correct. We'll find out what the depth is at that point, whether or not we can do the fence as is, or where it's located. Because we don't know if it's in the street at this point, or it's in the trail. I'll find out that depth.
When you get to Kip's Corner, you'll see it's in the street, because you can see the little yellow marker for the gas line. But the rest of them, I have no idea, as they come up.
But we have, we have, we have put, commonly, because unfortunately, the utilities are everywhere in our parkways, we've put trail fencing right over cable, gas. We understand that if a, if something.
That was just one, you didn't mention the gas line.
We can, we can accommodate it.
And then, you've already said it's 12 feet. And my parkway in front of my house, three feet. And that three feet, and that's the center of the fence. There's the trail fence, there's a tree. There used to be rosemary there, which is no longer there, because it died. So, I put, and I watered it, so now it has bottle brush. I'm a little concerned, because of right there, that's also Southern California easement, Edison easement, right?
There is an easement here, yes.
Yeah, it's right there. And you're going to put trees underneath the easement, right where we had the problem we had before.
Well, it's only if you do a sidewalk. Because we're only putting trees on a, on the option of sidewalk, because I don't have enough space to put trees if we do a trail. Because the trail's going to use up pretty much all that whole width.
But that's, you're basing your trail on your trail standard, which I agree with. But then also, in your trail standard book, in your comprehensive trail master plan, you also say that, you know, we have to adapt in certain areas where it has to be. So, if you've got a 12-foot width, and you go back, and we put the trail fence, which I think adds into what we're trying to do here in Norco, to, that's our claim, is the horse trail fence. I think if you get it too close to that street curb, you don't at least try to maintain that three-foot, it's going to end up getting trashed, and getting ran over, and hitting everything else, you're going to be replacing it more than anything else. At least with the curb, it's, they're hitting the curb, and if you leave it back on three set, you're not, three feet setback, you're not going to have that problem. The narrowness of the trail doesn't bother me as much, because you can ride singly and get plenty of width through there. As far as, so, but I think what you need to do is look at, the trail fence is also a traffic calming measure, because you're doing the visible, the visual restriction, which you do on that 50 mile an hour road. You're also, if you put bushes, as, I'm not a big fan of the trees, because of the, the power lines above there, because I don't care, eventually they'll grow. As you put bushes in, at least, and go the, the height of our trail fence at some point, you're going to get that traffic calming ability, because you're doing that restriction, and a little more of a buffer, and it's going to look nicer. So, like I said, that, in that section, because of the power lines, I would not be a big fan of any trees, because of their maintenance from Southern California Edison. As far as that sewer manhole cover, if that's an issue, then I guess you're going to have to go lower the one right in front of Gate Five at Eagles Park, because there's one right there in the corner, and I bet you over 40 horses a day pass that, walk on that thing and don't even know it's there. So, it's not an issue. Because, so, horse riders are pretty adept. As far as that trail, the amount of horses going to use that, and that part, I don't know. I tell you what you really need, and I don't want a sidewalk, by the way, I'm not a big fan of, you know, the concrete, because that's not what we're all about. But you ought to look at an organic binder trail, to where you can make it ADA approved, if you want to spend $100,000. And make that trail available for pedestrians, better than just DG. And you put on type of a binder composite in there, available at one of your materials with the polymer, so that trail is actually accessible for ADA, sidewalk, your runners, your joggers, and your horse people. And it's all compliant with all of them, instead of just going to our two options of concrete or DG. And I think that way, because our, our westerly winds that come every afternoon at 2:33, that DG gets real loose, you know, those people on the other side of that wall, and that area are going to eat that dirt. And I'm not, I don't care. I mean, I, I care, but some of those folks may not. And they may not like to see that dust coming up on their time. But that's a, you know, that's, I'm just thinking that, that's, we're going to create a sidewalk, let's create a sidewalk or a, a trail that's usable by a lot, instead of just going to our two standards. We've got to think a little differently on that trail, and the uses of that trail. But I would not be, I'm not, you, you want to worry about that vault cover, put that stuff into that, that you put at the corner of all our current streets now, the little bumpy dots, you know, for.
ADA.
Horses, horses cross it every day, Chad, and they don't seem to oppose to it. So, I, I, I mean, you see it, just how you train your horse. If you're not a good rider, then you're not going to go on that trail anyway. But I'm just, we, you can't let little things like that get in the way. I mean, even up by me, the pack bail thing, it starts, I've got a line where part of the trail, it sits out, and you go in front of my house, well, it doesn't stick out anymore, because I kind of pushed it back. So, it's not in the trail, but you go farther up the street, and they've got one sitting in the trail. But it's just, people ride around that, as compared to some of the streets down in the lower part of town, where we've got drains, fire hydrants. We had a palm tree for years on one. So, people will adapt. But I, I still think when you look at a trail, look at the varied uses in, in that, and far as erosion and things like that, and look at some of those trails, especially in that one, where you might want to use those organic binders from one of the companies. You have less maintenance, because you're not going to have to replace the, the DG as often. It's going to compact, and it's going to be used. So, alright, that's, thank you.
We're definitely aware that we can do other things. And again, we're, we're just trying to follow the standards, since that was set because of the desire of not doing future work that puts these impediments in the way, and thinking about it beforehand, so that these vaults are lower, and, and that's why our current standard says, "It shall be four inches below the, any new trail that's installed." And so, we're just trying to accommodate that. But absolutely, we can say, "It's not possible in this scenario, we want to do X, Y, and Z," and, and that's what we'll do. But my first goal is to try to do it to the standard, so it's what.
No, and I appreciate that. I'm just, but even in our, in your, in your two things, in the comprehensive trail master plan, and on your trail deal, you'll also allow for those, where you, where you have to make adjustments. And that's what I'm saying, we just make an adjustment. And, but I think you still need to keep that three-foot between that curb and, and the fence line. And, you know, I, I really don't want to put up a three-rail fence, because I don't, because that's not our standard for that, and, and you're just creating a false sense of security, that two-rail fence looks so much nicer.
And we already have the two-rail fence in front of the shopping center.
And, yeah, and it looks good.
Right.
So, I'm, but I'm concerned about putting trees, because of the power lines. Thank you.
Well, as one of the founding members of the Norco Horsemen's Association, there's no way I would vote to put a sidewalk over a horse trail in this town. Because that's what we started the Horsemen's Association for, was to stop the councils back then from destroying our trails and our lifestyle. And there's narrow trails all over town. There's one that, when I first got on council over here, that got put in, on, I think it's Park Ridge, by a church and some illegal walls and everything. And the city manager at that time, and the other director, would do nothing about it. And there's a big utility box right in the way, and it stopped people from being able to drive their carts down the trail. They can ride their horses. And, and narrow trails shouldn't be a concern, a concern when you can put in a trail, if you can get one horse width in there, that's plenty wide, because people will ride anywhere they can, just like Sunday. I had it over to Home Depot, and I crossed the bridge down here, and there goes a group of riders in the right-hand lane, going up the citrus, I guess. They, they'd already passed the entrance before they could get down in there and go through that causeway, but they, right there, the traffic 50 miles an hour, and the horses are just going right along. They weren't concerned, and evidently, the riders weren't either. But I wouldn't vote to put in a sidewalk over a horse trail, and like Ted said, you can lower those boxes or whatever, but a horse will go just, over just about anything, unless it's painted some real scary color, and they're not, they're not broke, you know, or not desensitized for stuff like that. So, I'm, I'm all for the, the horse trail, and are we, we going to vote on these separate, or the? Oh, just a minute, Kevin, I'm getting to that. We need to hear the cards on this now, or, or wait till we hear the?
Well, I mean, you don't, it's whatever's convenient for you. It probably makes more sense to hear the cards on this one separately from the second one, assuming that there are any. And right now, what's on the agenda is a single resolution approving both, but there's no reason why you can't change the, you adopt a single resolution, but if you said, we're, these are the requirements that we're going to add or subtract from one or the other, and just a part of the motion modifies the resolution.
Do we have any cards?
We have one speaker card, but I'm not sure if it's for the playground or the trails. Do you want to just have the one speaker? Go ahead and speak.
Yeah, then go ahead and speak, then if it's for the other one, that's okay.
Okay, it's Mike Thompson. You're the only one.
I better open the public hearing on that one.
Good evening, Council. On the Stuck Committee, I'm, I'm the one that's sending no vote. And my concern is safety. I live over there, we're talking my part of the woods. Not quite sure how to tweak this, but our first part with safety is, that stretch of River Road over there is nuts, because you've got the Ray Center divider from the Jack and O, from, from Second Street, all the way over the hill, until you drop down to Corydon. And that kind of prevents a traffic officer from sitting on the southbound side of the street, and radaring at the north side of the street. And I think them Eastvale people and a lot of the kids are very well aware, that once you get past Jack in the Box, the only place a traffic officer can eyeball you is from Kip's Corner. And Buddy, they stand on it in them little cars, as fast as they can, till they get over the hump. Then they got to deal with the Corydon traffic light. Then you got another traffic light at the shopping center. Then you got the other traffic light, the bluff. So, that's going to lower those speeds. So, I'm really concerned with that speed, that 50 mile an hour posted speed limit. A lot of people tend to go 15, 20 mile an hour over.
Really?
On, yeah. You know, no surprise, but. So, that stretch of, that stretch of Norco has needed an aesthetics, aesthetics or something help for a long time, because you got the other side belongs to Corona. So, I, I just don't want, I don't know how, I felt that, my personal opinion was irresponsible for the city to encourage folks to ride out there. And the liabilities and stuff that go along with that. Now, people in Norco are going to ride their horse anywhere they want. We all see that all the time. So, if they're going to want to ride out there, you know, they're, if it was a sidewalk, they're going to ride out there. And I live down pretty much on Second Street, and, and that Parker Ridge there, Western. So, if I was going to ride up to the new State of Brothers, I'd have to pass, I'd have to go up to Kip's Corner for my place, and pass Del Mar and San Anita, two perfectly good trails to get on up to Corydon, and then cross. Oh, shit, I'm running out of time. But, you know, we, other than the crossings, we've stayed away from horse trail on Hamner, because of the speed, the speeds and the amount of traffic. Other than Norco Hills Drive, which has a higher speed limit, but that has the approved standard that you folks set for the width of the trail and the offset from the street, which we can't squeeze in on this River Road section, a third of that with that block wall, you can't meet your approved trail standard. And as far as the liability goes, you approve to remove all the horse trails on the private streets, because of liability concerns. So, that's my conundrum, is, I like that idea of compact DG, so you could walk, ride, or whatever, and then the trail fence for the aesthetics. And then that slope is, you know, that belongs to the residences, if And then that slope is, you know, that belongs to the residences, if we could bush your trees or something to kind of block that off, it'd look great. But I just am very uncomfortable with encouraging our folks to ride out there and have an issue when they're going to, well, you made it a horse trail, so it should have been safe.
Thank, thank you, Mike.
Oh, that's my concern.
Well, I'll, I'll have an answer to that one. Uh, for two or three years after we started the Horsemen's Association, the association just cleaned that trail. It was a trail. They'd go over there twice a year and clean weeds and junk out of it. But, uh, what's the next, we got another card?
Yeah, we have one more card coming, Bonnie Slager.
Oh, Bill, you put B. I thought for the next item. Okay.
Hi, Bonnie.
Hi. Um, in regards to the sewer thing and what, like you say, there's already trails with fire hydrants in them. And on Fourth Street, there's water meters in the trail. And so I don't see a big deal about these other things. And, um, on Third Street, when you redid Third Street with the, um, white fencing, there's some utility boxes that are about this high that you have to ride around on the Third Street trail. So I don't really see that there's a problem about that. Um, yeah, the speed is fast there, but Fifth Street by the prison, people go really fast. Sixth Street, people don't go very slow. California is another one that's interesting to ride on. So I don't know if the speeds are faster on that street than the others or not, but I'm not going to take my three-year-old off the track thoroughbred on any of those streets anyway. But my experienced trail horse, yes. So I hope that you will put the trail in. Thank you.
The last speaker card, Bill Naylor.
Apologize for getting the wrong number on there. When you have multiple pages, it happens. I'm kind of going to reiterate what I spoke about at the Streets and Trails Commission meeting when we had the public hearing there. Uh, I think I like Ted's idea there. We can narrow this trail down just a little bit and put some kind of landscaping along there as a little more of a buffer. I think that's a great idea. I do agree with Mike that the speeds on, uh, River Road are extremely fast and that is a concern. And as a horseback rider, uh, I would echo Bonnie's sentiments. I would not want to take a horse out there that was new to that kind of stuff, but again, you're going to have to educate them at some point in time. But, uh, I'd take my regular trail horse out there and I'd walk right down the street and I wouldn't worry, or down the trail and I wouldn't worry about it. I think making it more of a multi-use trail, which most of our trails in Norco are supposed to be with the, um, stabilizer and such, might be a good idea because then it's, it makes it more amenable to the pedestrians that might want to walk down there. And I don't think we're going to have a ton of horses going down that street, but there will be some. And according to some of the residents at, uh, there, and, uh, we have Jim over there who lives right there, uh, they do see tracks going through there, so horses are using it already. Uh, let's see, one more thing that I had. Um, oh, I was going to make a point too, that we already have a major trail going across the, the San Ana River there at River Drive. And we're going to be putting also one in along Hamner, going across over to Silver Lakes. And we're going to talk about speed going. Those guys go flying through there, but you've got the trail there, so why, let's just tie this together. That's kind of just my, my thinking on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
We have no more speaker cards?
I'll close the public hearing and bring it back, and I'll make one more comment. There is a risk of a horse bailing out in front of traffic. That's on any street through here. I had one that jumped sideways over, over one of those little wooden fences several years ago, landed out in Seventh Street. He didn't, and then he jumped back, you know, with me on him and, uh, everything. But you talk about the chance of a li- uh, injury or accident or anything, you put a sidewalk on there, you're going to have bigger chances of kids on skateboards and bicycles barreling along that sidewalk and stumble or whatever they do and land out in front of a car. So there, there you go. It's six of one, half a dozen of the other and, uh, everything. But anybody got any more comments on this one or we move to the next?
Yeah, I got just a quick little comment. Um, I agree with Ted on going with this next pave and make it a real equestrian pedestrian trail. Um, like I mentioned with the utilities, um, I don't have a problem with the overall width and, and I like the setback on the fencing, whether that easement would be two foot or three foot. Basically leave us a 10-foot wide trail, which is plenty. But I'd like to reconsider planting trees in that, that easement along the street because I think that would assist with, uh, traffic calming. And if you look at the photos, um, it's going to be, those, those Edison lines are, are inboard. Um, I don't think you'd have an impact with, with the trees and the Edison lines. What's the Cal Fire Grant, 15-gallon trees? So...
Correct. And we would certainly, in an Edison easement area where there's lines, we would promote the same trees that Edison would like to include.
Right. I, I think there's an opportunity to plant some trees, uh, curb adjacent to the inboard side of that, uh, trail fencing. Just as a suggestion.
Yeah, the only thing we'll check on, and we have no problem shifting the width of the trail to accommodate a parkway. The only thing that we have to look at is the, what the width ultimately becomes to be and access of equipment to maintain it, um, especially to do, uh, and maintain and put, do, stay locked down if we needed to for next pave. Um, in the future, obviously it's not something we're going to have to repair in theory every year, but at some point you're going to skim it and then redo it again to, to make it back to a condition. So we just want to make sure that we have the proper equipment or our contractors have the proper equipment to do that.
That little Kubota, those...
That should be able to handle it.
That they, they bought will fit in.
It should fit.
It will fit.
And then we just want to make sure, uh, we'll confirm part of the process with Edison because that's their easement and in regards to their ability, do they need to physically drive on that and have a certain width? Or is it just the reach from the street to the lines that they're, they're okay with if they have that reach? So just some formal things we need to correct, but I don't think it'd be an issue.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the...
Can I, just one more thing on that, real, real quick?
Okay.
By the way, the only reason I was worried about the trees because of the power lines. In my parkway in front, the, the trail fence is a three-foot center from that curb, Chinese pistache and the bush is what's there now. So it can grow. I'm just saying, as long as we don't let it, if it's one of those approved trees goes underneath there, I hate to see a pine tree go underneath there or a pepper tree because that ain't going to happen. Uh, as far as the width, uh, 108 inches, that's the widest truck they can put on a roadway right now. So just think about that. As far as what their Edison or anybody else is going to put on there is 108. So that's all you need to get that truck curb to curb. So you give them 120, well, it's about 10 feet, that's more than enough for any truck. So, because they can't down the road anyway, in the highway with anything wider than 108 anyway. Thank you.
Okay, Brian?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This item here is, uh, project is for replacing playground equipment. Get up here. So the particular project that we brought before, the Measure Our Committee, also the Parks and Recreation Commission reviewed this and also supported, uh, the improvement. Uh, what this would do is replace four playgrounds, Pacer Park, Sundance Park, Kip's Corner, and Parmer Park. Uh, this would also call, require, uh, us, uh, as part of the process, uh, we would do pour-in-place here, uh, to meet our ADA requirements. Uh, we also have identified $194,308 in Prop 68 per capita money. At your last meeting, uh, the council supported, uh, a resolution, uh, for the grant funding for Prop 68 for this particular project. Um, so this is to finalize that, uh, project and support by council's action tonight, then that will be forwarded off to the state for, so that we can get our funding allocation. Um, this particular project, um, is a total of $503,000. With the grant funding, we are requesting $308,692 for replacement of this playground. Um, as you can see in some of the photos here, you can see a lot of the deterioration. We've already fenced off one, we've actually fenced off two of the playgrounds right now and away so that the public cannot use them. They, because they've just deteriorated to a stage where we have such fatigue in some of the metals and things. One of our biggest problems is the age of the playgrounds. Um, we're not able to even obtain new parts for them. Uh, the decks and things like that, uh, they're just, they're not replacing, uh, we can't even replace them or with parts. Typically, uh, you're able to order things that, uh, that end up going bad or break down over time, but at this point, uh, we're not able to do that. So, uh, based on our recent survey and evaluation by our superintendent, who is a state certified playground inspector, he has strongly recommended that these, uh, four playgrounds be replaced. And that's what's before you tonight. Um, and with adoption of this resolution, we'll make, we'll move forward with this project.
Okay, uh, have any questions, anybody? Ted, we'll start with you.
Yeah, Brian, I'm just curious, it's, the upper part of the equipment is still decent, right? It's just the lower parts that are hidden by water or is that...
Just over time, they're 20-plus years old.
No, I understand that.
They start to fatigue. So the problem is you can't replace part of it and not replace the whole unit. And in fact, a lot of this equipment right here, um, we couldn't, we couldn't even, if, for example, we cannot from the manufacturer get these type of parts, um, to replace the unit. They, they just don't make them anymore.
Okay.
The, the evolution of playgrounds in 20 years has moved so far forward, uh, particularly for creative spaces, uh, inclusion and all of those factors. It, it, it really has, uh, kept us from being able to even find parts for this and...
Well, that's because if they made parts, they wouldn't be able to sell you new ones.
Well, that's true. But we did get, we did get 20 years. The life expectancy for playgrounds is somewhere between 15 and 20 years, um, before you look at replacing it. So that's where we are right now.
Okay, so nobody fabricates that stuff either? Or what, I know nobody welds on it because nobody wants to take the liability.
That's true.
So, okay, thank you.
Kevin?
Well, I think your prices are good. Actually, you could get the parts for this, but you would have to search. It could take you five years to find a piece here, find a piece there, find a piece here. Uh, but I thought your prices were really good. Um, and then the other problem, of course, is if you piece it together like that, which could take five years, um, I don't know if you'd be able to get your certification. And that's the problem because you could never find all the pieces that you would need to find to, to do it. And also I don't know how you do the, uh, the rubber, the rubber surfacing. I don't know how you do that either. So I'm in favor of this. It has to be done. These are, the, the other part of this is these are really heavily used parks. And, um, I've, I've already had some calls from people saying, when are they going to open them? So, so, um, what company did you go with?
Our price point here is looking at Miracle. We, we looked at Game Time because, uh, one of our commissioners from Measure Our had just, is in procurement for the City of Long Beach and identified Game Time. And Game Time has a grant program within their structure. So we, in between there, we went to Game Time to get our, get another cost breakout before we bid this project. And, um, the problem with the grant, and it's $100,000, the problem is the equipment is so much more that we, this, you're spending a lot more on that same sort of...
Yeah.
And you, you can't get playgrounds that are alike for alike. They're a little bit different. So you can't, we would be spending actually more money, even with the grant subsidy...
Right.
From Game Time than we would to, in getting the same product. So for us...
I prefer, I prefer the Miracle equipment anyway, so...
They've been a...
Good job, Brian.
Long time we've used them and they, they, they actually are very supportive of their playgrounds once we put them in, so...
Robin?
I have a couple of questions. Brian, with the ADA thing that we approved at our last meeting and replacement of these parks, does that reduce the expense on those certifications?
No.
Really?
Everything we do here, um, will be an ADA. The assessment we do is to meet the requirement by the federal government. So everything we put in will be assessed and reviewed to make sure that we have a report that comes forward. That's all that report does, is certify the, that the city has made, has a plan and has a transition plan for capital improvement to, um, do those improvements over a period of time. So everything we do now in any particular project, whether it be Chad or myself, are working to make sure we meet all the requirements under the Americans with Disabilities Act in that particular area of scope of work. So these playgrounds is, but one of the things that the assessment will look at as well as the playgrounds, and they'll certify that these meet all the requirements, um, but two, they're going to look at path of travel.
Right, right.
They're going to look at signage and all of those.
We went over that last time and I get that, but my question is though, will new playground equipment that is, you're saying right here is ADA certified, reduce the amount of time that the person would have taken and additionally...
Yes.
Originally quoted us, it's going to take X number of hours for this car.
If he was going, if, if to review our playgrounds was going to require 20 hours...
Correct.
I would imagine he's going to be able to look at this with the new plans and drawings and maybe that's two hours of time.
Right, exactly. And that was my question, so...
And we will make sure that that's done. In fact, he's actually given us, uh, the ability to send him stuff to, to reevaluate ahead of time. So I, I would, he, when we talk to them, there's the low-hanging fruit that he talks about that where you've met the intent or you have done that, or it just needs minor adjustments to, uh, meet the correction, which you might be able to do right away. This would be low-hanging fruit. So what was originally just looked at probably is going to, will be, it will be reduced. It's not going to take that long because all of this is coming in already pre-certified.
Right, right. Okay. And then my second question for you would be, has there been some talk by Parks and Rec or whoever's making the purchasing decisions to, um, look at having these kind of Western or Norco-ish themed as they go into the parks, or is that not a consideration?
We, we look at it, a lot of the playgrounds that we, that you can do, um, and if you're going to get into themed playgrounds, that typically your price point's going to go up. And then number two, you're, uh, not everyone does it or does it well. There's a couple of companies out there that do it. Pike's Peak is an example, is, uh, is not the same manufacturer. They do a lot of specialized themed type of, of units. And we've had very good luck with that particular unit for longevity and it gets a lot of use. Landscape Structures is the other one that does that. So we've really looked at this one for cost effectiveness. If I was to get into more themed looking ones, and we can work with Miracle on that, once we get our final design, typically we will look at our designs and color schemes with the, with the commission to kind of make sure we're meeting, uh, kind of our process. And we've done that with various colors in different parks. The, the challenge is, is that is the more themed you get oriented, the more cost that is going to cost. So we can take a look at that and there might be some areas where we do it. Uh, these all will also have covers to help with reduction of, uh, UV rays, which is something we don't have in existing right now on these particular playgrounds.
Okay, so as it's priced right now, the answer would be no?
Uh, the, the design I have here doesn't really create a Western theme atmosphere.
And then the last, sorry, I think I told you that was my last question. I have one other one. Is there something that can be put into, um, a maintenance schedule that would increase the longevity of these items when they're purchased? Like if every three to five years it's coated with this or if something is done to extend the... the life of the playgrounds?
Yeah. Right now, under our contract with our landscape contract, we, they get cleaned once a month with a biodegradable soap. But with the COVID, we, there's new requirements that are being looked at right now and using an ionized sprayer. We actually have acquired one now. So Todd, we had reopened our playgrounds because that, the county allowed playgrounds to be reopened. Now there's discussion of reclosing all playgrounds. But we've been using the ionized because it, the way it works is it sanitizes it much faster. So especially for large areas. But as far as like, if, if you maintain the equipment and you find problems with them, you typically were able to make those repairs and keep, you know, the small parts and stuff. I think the challenge comes with age. At some point, especially rubber coated decks and stuff, they start to peel and deteriorate. One of our biggest problems with playgrounds is vandalism. Graffiti, cutting, things going on that are not, that really reduces that life expectancy. If we're able to stay on top of that and we have, don't have the vandalism, wear and tear, you're going to get 20 years. But I think it's, it's not really realistic, honestly, to think we're going to get beyond. I mean, we got to, to go 30 years on the Pacer Park Playground is amazing. And I've done this a long time. I've, I've never seen a place of playground that's made it that long that is actually legal to even have out there in today's requirements. So that, that playground, and we were able, through Miracle, be able to get parts, and they actually provided us at that time a retrofit kit that we were able to retrofit to get certain parts that are not made anymore, be able to retrofit to fit. And so, but we've been able to carry that as far as we can right now. So it obviously is a big part of it, and I think one of the, the nice things that I have on the team now is I have a certified playground inspector who prides himself in making sure that stuff is right. So the care that we will look at and the observation is important as well. Seeing things that happen, making sure those get, get the attention they need and don't let it become, so if you start seeing rust or certain problems, address it right away. Do not let it get worse so that it becomes a problem.
Thank you for your answer. And I think just historically, looking at Norco facilities, that's what we do. We don't take, we know maintenance has been an issue. And so now, I'm glad we're able to fix some, but let's not let maintenance become the issue again.
Not a deferred issue. Let's get the life out of it that we need to. I agree.
Greg? Got any questions? I don't either. Have a public hearing. Do we have any cards?
We have no further speaker cards on this item.
Close the public hearing, bring it back to council. What's your desire? Motion somebody?
I make a motion that we go with the trail system along River Road, include the trees, and utilize a hardened pack, and that we approve in total the playground equipment.
Second. We have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Grunmeier?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
You, you will still need to address Resolution 2020-69, which is the appropriation of the funds to do the things that you just suggested.
I make a motion to appropriate the funds per what John just said.
Second. Diddle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, now, Item 6B is approved, the Gold Star, Blue Star Family Memorial redesign, and that's also the deputy city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before tonight is the approval of Resolution Number 2020-70, and that's to amend the capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2021, adding the Gold Star, Blue Star Families Monument Project, and to approve the redesign of the monument to be in line with the Hershey, Herschel Woody Williams National Monument Foundation Program. The proposal tonight will adopt the national program for Gold Star Families and recognize also the Blue Star Families. The Herschel Woody Williams Memorial Foundation recognizes and has a national program where Gold Star Families are recognized throughout the United States. As part of that, a monument has been created that stays in line with a, a theme throughout the United States, and these are going in in various ways and locations. The Woody Williams Foundation also works with those local agencies and nonprofits to actually put these monuments in, and the actual program, the design, is done by their engineer, by their architects. The, what the city would have to be required to do is site work, engineering, and any hardscape design that would have to be around the actual monument. This is an example of the existing conceptual monument right here is what we originally looked at as a concept. It's, it's a beautiful concept, it's very ornamental. Cost for this is significantly high. It requires a lot of individual design work to meet this sort of ornamental design. We originally looked at this concept, and then over time, our Veterans Committee came up with, through various sources, the Woody Williams Program as it started to initiate throughout the United States. So we started doing some more research and looking into this particular design. And it really met the need and the theme of what we really wanted to accomplish and stay within a reasonable budget factor. The original design and concept was to be located here. That will not change. That location will remain the same. The design for the Woody Williams Foundation provides the recognition of Gold Star Families Memorial Monument, the Gold Star here. This is actually a silhouette of Woody Williams, and Woody Williams is also a Congressional Medal of Honor winner. It puts a tribute to our fam, the families and relatives. And this, this side stay and theme stays pretty much is the same. However, the, the other opposite side of the monument allows for the community to put its own personal touches to that and recognition. So our, our Veterans Committee has had discussion about what would go on these panels? How would we look at these? What could these different symbols mean? As you, you see Homeland, Family, Patriot, and Sacrifice. As these have gone up around the United States, these have all been more individually tuned to each community's needs or interests. They strongly talk about the Patriot one, the foundation, they like this particular look. Our, our Veterans Committee supported it. One of the chats that the Veterans Committee did is they met with the Gold Star Families and Blue Star Families as organizations, and we reviewed these particular concepts with them because we really wanted them to have a buy-in and be part of that process. They, and their organizations were unanimous in this concept and this idea. They provided additional comments and things that they would like to help to contribute to the space or area. So our goal would be to work with them closely over the next few months if approved, and we would be working to do that. Our Veterans Committee would take the lead in this process, and we would work to do this. The reason why I bring this, and this just gives you, the, the foundation actually provides us with the layouts of the drawings, various different elevation changes. They actually sent us the proofs before we, any engraving is done on the black granite, so it is approved ahead of time before it goes into production. This is a, a layout that we had our city engineer do for us of the location where we have been working, our committee has been working to actually decide where we would be placing this, and I'm sorry, I'll go do it here so everyone can see it, but actually the placement. We have all the area topical done, and so the concepts that have been discussed is a seat wall, the monument to go in a location in here, the seat walls. It allows people to be able to walk all the way around the monument. The Gold Star Families Organization has talked about adding a particularly, a sign that is universal throughout the United States, recognizing Gold Star Families. We've talked about designing and bringing in the recognition of Blue Star Families and doing something within the seat walls that actually highlight Blue Stars. So we haven't worked on the details in, in regarding the actual final site plan. That'll come later with the committee's work once approved tonight. But we have actually, the space, the monument fits, so really tonight, it's about approving funding. As the staff report identifies, the council approved a, the Palomino Caprite Partners Project. As part of that development agreement, Caprite agreed to put funds towards the development of a Gold Star, Blue Star Family Monument. So tonight, what I'm asking for is the council to actually approve this capital improvement fund, fund the, the project upfront. By the time the development agreement funds come to the city, it's going to be down the road. So we could actually get started on this with the goal in mind that come late or early, late summer, early fall, is to actually have it done in 2021, which would allow us to recognize Gold Star Families on their, on their National Recognized Day. So that's kind of the goal of the committee and what we'd like to do. To do this, to move forward now with final design, to institute an agreement with the foundation, it would require us then to start to fund this particular project. So with that, I'll conclude. Any comments? I'll try to answer those. We do have Councilman Bash and Councilman Hoffman, who are on the Veterans Committee, who have been part of the discussion process throughout this. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Greg?
Do you feel the, the $120,000 is enough to cover the magnitude of the project?
When we first did this layout, yeah, we, we believe, the number, that's how I came up in the number. We actually did the, the work for the engineering, site work, hardscape, and then also the monument. If we tried to add, there's been some discussion of adding other features to that area. The Gold Star Families have talked about their, what kind of contributions they may want to make towards this. And then, so it depends on where we take the final site plan. But the existing hardscape, the seat walls, the actual memorial is filtered into this $120,000.
Okay. And then maybe, I guess, Andy? I guess my question would be on the development agreement and the, the public benefit funds. If I recall right, that was supposed to be paid when building permits or building plans were submitted?
No.
Or, or when permits are issued?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we know the status of that yet?
I think they've submitted their drawings, if that's correct.
Okay.
They've submitted their grading plans and some of the utility plans to review at this point. I'm not sure related to any of the onsite.
I was just curious to that. So, I mean, certainly supportive of it.
The, the funds that would be, that would come out of the, this particular fund, the 140910, would be reimbursed once those impact fees are received.
Once a building permit's issued. Right. Okay.
Robin? Kevin?
Yeah, very quickly, the, the idea behind this was, one, we, the other one was so ornate that it really overwhelmed and competed with the existing memorial. But the idea was the 100 acres that will be developed as an industrial complex, we were trying to find something that we could point to and say, this is something that we got because of this, we could point to it. And this is actually part of three projects. It's part of this one, and our hope is to create something where we realized that we weren't capitalizing on the view. And so the area in front of it facing west, we're hoping will be a quiet place for the Gold and Blue Star Families. That was the other thing that came up. We were so focused on Gold Star Mothers and Blue Star Mothers that Gold Star, Blue Star Fathers were quite upset. And so we decided to, Brian found this, or Ted found this design, and we all loved it. The hope is that we will somehow bring into this the Blue Star Mothers. The second memorial is the Kathy Azavito Monument, which we have funding for. And then the third piece, because the Isens, who founded the egg ranch, the 100 Acres, were Auschwitz, he was an Auschwitz survivor, she was a freedom fighter, and we actually, in the city of Norco, have had five, three concentration camp survivors and two freedom fighters. And so this was our way of honoring those, and we've actually funded all three through this development agreement. So I'm very excited about this, and the goal is to unveil it, is it the Gold Star or the Blue Star?
Both Stars, I think.
Gold Star.
Family, it's on, it's in, us Sunday in September.
So the goal is, is try to, to try to unveil this at that time, and that's why we're asking for the funding. But, you know, Norco's known for this kind of stuff, and our, as you know, our memorial is the envy of a lot of cities. So that's all I have. I, I hope we, we pass this.
Ed?
The one thing that Brian forgot to mention is being part of the, this national design is that it will actually be on their national register. We belong to that organization by doing this. It will be, our memorial will be listed nationally on theirs. So when other veterans and Gold Stars and Blue Star Families go around the countryside, they'll find us. And that's, that's a big selling factor in the fact that it's nationally known. The Riverside National Cemetery is building one also. If you want to, there's one at the Ronald Reagan Library, along with, there's one in Hayward, and I believe there's somewhere down in San Diego. So this is a huge undertaking by us, a small community like ourselves, doing it this way. So I hope the rest of my council supports it. It's, it fits in with the granite theme we have up there. If you know, the POW MIA monument was funded by our local Rotary Club, again, with the granite theme. So this is how we do things, and this is a good way, if hopefully everybody supports it. Thank you.
Just to note on this particular elevation is the, this silhouette really allows the view shed from where this will be placed. So you actually get a lookout over Norco all the way to Chino. So I, I think that's, was one of the things when we looked at this that was, the committee really liked that ability to have that sort of silhouette representing this, be able to actually see through that and see that as well.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any cards?
We have no speaker cards on this item.
Okay. Close the public hearing and bring it back.
Motion to approve?
Second.
That's good, you guys are on the committee. I'm glad you did that. I'm serious.
Councilmember Grunmeier?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Point of order.
Ask me what resolution.
2020-70.
Oh, I didn't say it right. If you'd have said it, I would have said what John said.
Kevin said what John said, so. Kevin said what John said, so we'll start over.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, now we have our city manager, staff, and council. Communications, Robin? Greg?
Just a couple of follow-ups. First one for Chad on, was brought up on regard, the resident on Third Street and his water bill? Is that being worked out with the county?
Yeah, because it's, because it's a claim related to the project, the county has to address it with the contractor, and I've advised them to recognize that with the photos and the videos showing the usage, that there really isn't, shouldn't be a dispute, and to work with the resident to find out what his utility bill was and pay him.
Okay. And then, when Jim brought up earlier about the Vine Trail, have you discussed this with Streets and Trails as far as signage and what we're planning on doing with replacing signs?
Sorry, no, not this time. I just provided you the council as a follow-up.
Okay.
And I also provided that information to Mr. Pollak, since he was the original person who.
Yeah, I met Jim out there, so. But you'll be advising Streets and Trails Commission on this?
Sure.
Okay. And then, Mayor, the last item I had was for our lieutenant to address the situation with the motor home, or an update?
Ed?
And, do we have any of these no parking anytime signs in our yard?
I don't know. I think it was a, I think it was a no parking for, I think it was trailers or motor homes.
Whatever.
I'd have to look. But it's something we certainly could probably get.
You could find those signs in the yard, right? Have them installed tomorrow?
No. Because it really needs to be something that council adopts, as far as no parking, for that restriction.
Two week, Chad.
Two more weeks.
Two more weeks. So.
I don't know about that.
A nice Christmas gift. So, whenever it's convenient for the lieutenant to address the situation.
These times coming around.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ed?
Nothing other than thank you for, the council for the support on the items tonight.
Brian?
Ditto that, I just wanted to say that I saw those pictures of that steer that was down today, and that must have been, close to a world record sized steer. That's a big boy there.
Well, that is not, that is not a steer, that's an ox.
Yeah. It was one big animal.
Yeah, he stands seven feet in the rivers, and he weighs about 3,500 pounds, but that's an ox. When Melvin told me that they had a steer down, I'm thinking, seven or eight hundred pounds, if he's, if he's broke his back, can't get up, not dead yet, they can have him butchered, save him, and I get over and here's this monster. I mean, Ted and them standing there by him, you know, he's laying down, and he's as tall as, laying down, he's as tall as Ted. Quite a deal there. Okay, let's see. Alma? Ted? Officer? How'd you quiet back there? Matt? John?
See, I'll be the bearer of the bad news, that we're, otherwise he would be. We need to go back into closed session at the conclusion of this, because we ran out of time for just a few minutes.
Oh, we're getting close to the 12:15 mark from last time, so. Lieutenant, you want to give your report now, please? Or your, whatever Greg wants to hear?
Well, there's never excuses.
Is this, is this no shave month?
Well, it's continuing on.
Oh, I was gonna say.
Through the winter.
Yeah, you're two days over, bud.
Right. So in regards to the motor home, yes, we have been out there several times to deal with the situation. Violations of law have been addressed, subjects have gone to jail. Whether or not they stay in jail, we all know that that's not the case. So they're right back out within hours. There are several issues that were brought up regarding APS, CPS, as they've all been dealt with. There are no tangible violations to take the kids or take the adult in the Adult Protective Services. From what we've seen is, every time we go out there to deal with them, we get a complaint from the resident that lives there about our actions and that we're harassing this individual. So, in hindsight, we address the issues. We've tagged the vehicle. Vehicle does move, so there's no Community Caretaker Act for us to tow the vehicle. All the health and safety violations that we deal with, most likely are citable. I can't give you the amount of citations, but I know that we've dealt with this, so. It's been an ongoing issue for quite some time. It's a good question. Criminal justice reform?
Yeah, I was gonna say, this, well, this is obviously a significant issue on this street in Norco. It's a significant issue for virtually every city in California because of how the law works. While, I mean, suggesting that, okay, the answer is, let's put up, you, no parking on this, on the street, that annoys the people that live there, but even if they buy into it, all that happens is move someplace else. And you can't follow them around the city putting up continuous, you can't park your signs, just because of that motor home. And at this point, we've had a discussion about other things before, they're public streets, and you can have the 72 hours, but if they move it, even a small amount, that under the existing case law meets the requirements of the law.
And that's really tied our hands with the Community Caretaker Act, because we have to show several reasons why we need to remove that vehicle from the road. We can't just remove it because it's been parked there for 72 hours. There's got to be more issues related to the Community Caretaker Act, and that's case law.
Yeah, in addition, is a consequence of very recent cases, that there's also a due process requirement that doesn't exist in the statute, but exists because of case law before you can remove a vehicle. And obviously, it's compounded by the pandemic and homelessness and everything else.
Dumping the waste in the street is not an issue, and then I just thought, well, I guess you could go to San Francisco and it's okay, so.
You go to any homeless encampment, same thing, so.
I have a question. So, and my understanding is, is that garages now, you can live in them. Is that correct, or does that have to be health and safety things?
No, I mean, I don't think anything's changed with regard, I mean, you can't simply live in a garage, that there, I mean, there, it has to be habitable, but most garages probably are.
Yeah. Because with the new law, the ADA, ADA, all that stuff, wouldn't, they can live in garages now, right?
Now, that's a different question, but could they convert a garage to an accessory dwelling unit? Yes.
Right, yeah.
The place, the place on my street that code enforcement's on now because of a whole bunch of violations, and part of them are in the, part of them are in the garage. I remember one time.
Yeah, I mean, you can't simply say, okay, wave a wand and say this is now an accessory dwelling unit. The accessory dwelling unit has to meet the basic construction requirements, building code requirements, but there's nothing to prevent you from converting it to an accessory dwelling unit.
So the follow-up question.
That law last year, didn't they, where they could, they enacted that law last year, wasn't it, where they could, the cities couldn't do anything about people parking on the streets?
It was a recent case law, I don't recall, it was within the last few years, the Community Caretaker Act, yeah.
Mayor, if, but let's say, Andy, could you check to see if the garage conversion is permitted?
I mean, it sounds like they're just, that the kids are, yeah, putting in cot, I mean, I'm making this up, but putting in cots and living there, sleeping there at night, because they're, and I'm making this part up too, because it's crowded in the trailer, and the adults want to do things that adults want to do, and the, want the kids where, away from the, what the adults are doing. I'm trying to be vague.
Here's, I mean, I can't go into.
Okay, Saunders, without gender, is it for closed session?
Okay, that's.
And I'm sorry to answer your question regards to the garage. I can't go into specifics, but if a minor was living in an unsuitable location, then CPS would definitely take action. Let's just put it that way.
Mr. Mayor, and I guess, the way I look at it, and I know you guys have been out there probably 30-plus times, according to that woman there, I don't know, but these are one of those things that, it eats on the neighborhood, and it's one of those things that you're looking for a resolution and trying to get it solved, but sometimes it would help if we were alerted earlier, so we can put this kind of discussion together, so maybe we can look at some other alternative things that, to do, instead of just putting up a sign that says no parking. I'm just, we don't want to drag it on, because you're gonna beat your, your guys are getting frustrated with it, I know how it goes. And everybody gets frustrated with it, and then the neighbors get frustrated. So if we were, at least had prised of it earlier, at least that way we would maybe look for another, another way out, or another action. Just a thought. Thanks.
Thank you, Lieutenant. We know you're trying. Okay, let's see, Ted?
And, I mean, just to follow up on that, I'm not suggesting this, but for example, some, what some communities have finally done is taken some city property and said, okay, you can legally park here and stay here as long as you need to, and it gets them off the street.
Thanks, John.
Excuse me, it's your turn, Andy. Your turn, are you gonna wait till closed session?
Yes, I'm gonna work.
Ed?
One of the things, and this is something, Andy, as we get through into 2021, I know we last, we finished up the strategic plan, basically, for, in the 2016, did a good recap at beginning of last year, beginning of this year. So what we may want to think about as we progress through is a look at updating that, and maybe look forward to, for some other goals or other plans that we have on it, and I know you and staff will work on it and get us together and all the commissions, to maybe we look at for the next five or 10 years down the road. It's been, it's been a good guideline for us to follow back on and to go for goals, and that's, that's the important thing. So we have a plan, that's what we want. And finally, Mr. Mayor, and tonight, I'd like us, today marks the five-year anniversary of the terrorist attack in San Bernardino on December 2nd of 2015, and we should not forget about the people who died and were injured that day. In Norco, we have the Healing Garden at Pike's Peak Park, dedicated to one of those victims, that was Benetta Bethendall of Norco. And, you know, we collectively mourn all of the 14 men and women that were killed there five years ago in that terrorist attack at the Inland Regional Center in San Bernardino. So tonight, in their honor, I'd like just to close out our meeting, for good, thank you.
Have to wait till the end of the closed session before we close it out. Kevin?
Yeah, I'm confused. So are we gonna do the markings on Vine Street? Are we gonna take care of that?
No.
No?
We're just updating all the signage to make sure it's to current, current code, because it's out of date.
Okay, but I mean, we're gonna do the signs, and we're gonna do the marking on Vine Street?
No, we're promoting, the interview I sent to council was to adjust all the signage to make it to current code.
And the Streets and Trails, I'm referring to, I was just kind of confused on that. And then, you know, I don't know how to do this, Brian, but you know, one of the things I'd really like to have measure our look at, is I'd like to begin to plan the community center, to look at that, to sort of develop a plan, to, I mean, we're doing a lot of stuff, but I'd really like to, you know, figure out a way to capitalize on all the people going to the gym, utilizing the community center, that kind of thing. We've talked about it before. It may have to follow the updating of the strategic plan, but it's something I, I think we need to do. And then, just as a side note, I need to get the flag from the Commemorative Partner Program. For those of you who don't know, we were the first one in the state of California to be part of that national program to remember and commemorate the Vietnam War. And I noticed the flags getting a little bit, just needs to be.
The chromes.
Yeah, just, and we have to send that back, and they'll send us a new flag. So if I could get that, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, folks, this is my last meeting as the mayor, which I'm sure probably a bunch of you are happy about that, but I think I've been mayor three and a half times since I've been on here, half the time when Malcolm got sick, then three more times since then, but it's been challenging. It's also been fun, it's been interesting, we've all managed to get a lot done and everything, and I will say this, that of all the years, I sat out here for four or five years before I got on council, that this group right here, I don't want you to get in the big heads, is the best council I've ever seen in this deal. I'm not saying it because I'm on there, but the other councils, they was hate and dissension and fighting, and they argued they didn't get a lot done, and I feel like we don't always agree, but we get along. And we have got one heck of a lot of stuff done in the last five years because of that, and we, and the main reason we do this, get everything done, is because of the staff that we have, hardworking, shorthanded staff, but everybody works and we get things done, and I, I really appreciate it, because I couldn't, few of those councils I was sitting on, that we had some slugs on there that was just dead weight. Been in the normal world, they'd have got fired the first day. You know, they caused a lot of dissension and hate in town, and I remember for years that public comments, that people would be lined up to talk about problems and their unhappiness, and you notice the last five years that we haven't had that much, many people come into public comments. The citizens all seem to be pretty well satisfied. If they're not, they call us, and we try to get things resolved. And again, that's where staff comes in, it happens, even with the sheriff departments real quick to act on things, code enforcement, and I hate that, that the law moves like molasses, because there's an issue on my street right now, that code enforcement's working on, and the neighbors are all calling me, and I said, well, they've, they've got citations, and they're gonna get another one in a few days, and then they're gonna get another one, then they get a letter from the attorney, then it gets lost in the court system, no time how long it'll be resolved, and that's an issue, Andy, for. And that's an issue, Andy, for people living in the garage, and it's just up and down garage doors, no facilities, little tiny, tiny house, but Kathy and Javier is working on it, but I do appreciate all you guys and everything, and everything we've got done. And I'm not an "I" person, it was "we" done it. I might think of something sometimes, but it's "we." It takes a village to make, make things work, and I think that's why we've got so much done, done this time. But with that, we'll end this meeting, and we'll go back into closed session, but thank everybody. And as you know, I got my sentence extended for two more weeks, thanks to, so, thank you.[1797.23]